You're doing the first one, okay. Good evening and welcome to the August 6th Lawrence City Commission meeting. We'll start tonight with the approval of the agenda. The City Commission reserves the right to amend, supplement, or reorder the agenda during the meeting. Are there any changes that anybody wishes?
I approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Soden, a second by Commissioner Nanda, all in favor. Aye. Opposed. Passes unanimously. And then we'll start off now with our recognitions. And the first one we have this week is the proclamation of approximately the week of August 1st through the 7th as World Breastfeeding Week. And I believe Commissioner Hernandez, Vice Mayor Hernandez, gonna talk about that one. So who do we have representing?
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Emily Hartford and I'm with the Breastfeeding Coalition of Douglas County. And I just have a short statement that I'd love to share with you all. On behalf of the Breastfeeding Coalition of Douglas County, we'd like to thank the City of Lawrence and the City Commission for recognizing this week as World Breastfeeding Week in Lawrence and recognizing human milk as an important and vital first food. Many babies in the United States and around the world are growing up in a first food desert. Food deserts occur when households are more than one mile away from a supermarket with healthy fruits and vegetables. A first food desert occurs when access to support for caregivers who want to breastfeed is nonexistent or too far away. Babies in these communities are sicker than infants in communities with first food support. For babies that are born too sick, too small, or too soon, breast milk can literally help save their life. To create a first food friendly community, employers need supportive breastfeeding policies. Pediatricians and other doctors need to offer lactation consultant referrals. Public places need to be nursing friendly, and lactation support needs to be accessible and affordable. BCDC, our breastfeeding coalition, is proud to work in a community where more businesses and organizations join in the effort to make breast milk available to babies where people work, shop, and live. Each year, new places join in on the Breastfeeding Welcome Here Initiative. More businesses become breastfeeding friendly. Additional lactation spaces are added and policies created to support breastfeeding caregivers who go to work. Just Saturday, we collaborated with Lawrence Public Library for our fourth annual World Breastfeeding Week celebration, where we had five presentations that helped people who are breastfeeding in our community get access and connection to resources. And we had eighteen community partners who support breastfeeding in Lawrence. We are making good progress, and there is still a lot of work to be done. We're grateful for the support of the City of Lawrence in our efforts in making this a first food friendly community. We encourage our local government to find new ways to ensure that all babies have access to breast milk and support breastfeeding caregivers. And we'd be thrilled to further collaborate and work together on doing just that. The theme for World Breastfeeding Week this year is Empower Parents, Enable Breastfeeding. Here's to another year of community work to do just that.
Thank you. So I'll go ahead with the proclamation. Whereas, the people of Lawrence, Kansas are deserving of good health, and whereas, human milk is the preferred and most appropriate first food for infants, adapting over time to meet changing needs of a growing child, and is safe, reliable, and renewable; and whereas, breastfeeding is a proven primary prevention strategy protecting both infants and mothers from a host of chronic and acute diseases and conditions, and building a foundation for lifelong health and wellness; and whereas, employers who provide workplace lactation support experience an impressive return on investment, including lower healthcare costs, absenteeism, and turnover rates, as well as improved morale, job satisfaction, and productivity; and whereas, Lawrence continues to work toward a culture where breastfeeding is the norm, promoting, protecting, and supporting families by examining the role of social, economic, and environmental factors that impact breastfeeding. Now therefore, I, Jennifer Hernandez, Vice Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim August 1st through 7th, 2019 to be World Breastfeeding Week and encourage all citizens to support breastfeeding families wherever and whenever possible.
So our next proclamation is to proclaim the week of August 4th through the 10th as Farmer's Market Week.
Yes, good evening. My name is Kim Kreiner Ritchie. I'm the Chair of the Douglas County Food Policy Council. For those who aren't familiar with our work, we're an advisory board to both the city and county commissions on issues and policies that impact our local food system. And so I'm here on behalf of the Food Policy Council tonight to request that this week, August 4th through 10th, formally be celebrated as Farmer's Market Week in Lawrence, in conjunction with National Farmer's Market Week. So I want to give the opportunity, if there are, if any of my fellow FPC members or representatives of Farmer's Market are here in support, that's okay. We are overlapping with the Tuesday market, so we knew that was a possibility.
Well, we're here to support you, okay? We are here to support you.
Yes, thank you. Farmer's markets are not only community gathering places where residents can connect with the entrepreneurs and family farms growing their food, they are also opportunities for economic development, which is a significant priority outlined in the Douglas County Food Policy, I'm sorry, Food System Plan. Visitors to our Cal Valley Farmer's Markets spend approximately $800,000 annually in their visits to our county markets. And that does not include the spillover spending that visitors bring to local businesses when they visit the market. So in lieu of ways to celebrate, if it was last week, I would've told you to visit the Tuesday market, but we just missed that. But perhaps some of you stopped on your way here and are aware that this evening was the first time that the Tuesday market was held in its new location in South Park, which is a change from its parking garage location. So that's very exciting, and hopefully you'll all be able to stop by and visit that location in the future. If you are attending the Saturday market, or if you need an excuse to, please stop by and visit with members of the Food Policy Council. We will be there this week talking about priorities for a permanent location for our Lawrence market. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll go ahead and read the proclamation now. Whereas, Farmer's markets are important civic amenities and convening places for communities nationwide, providing agricultural producers increased consumer outlets for a variety of fresh, affordable, convenient, and healthful products sold directly from the farm, and opportunities for community members to connect with the diverse sources of regionally significant and successful foods; and whereas, the Farmer's markets of Cal Valley play a key role in building a strong local food economy, providing platforms for food business entrepreneurship, economic development, and agricultural tourism, all of which are priorities highlighted in the Douglas County Food System Plan and in the recently approved draft addition to Chapter 7, Section E of Plan 2040. And whereas, the City of Lawrence recognizes the myriad benefits of Farmer's markets for producers and consumers, such as supporting the longevity of family farms and local food and farm economic development, and fostering community wellness through healthy food access and safe, welcoming gathering spaces, and is fully committed to supporting Farmer's markets' continued success. Now therefore, I, Lisa Larson, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the week of August 4th through the 10th, 2019, as Farmer's Market Week in Lawrence, Kansas, in coordination with the National Farmer's Market Week, and encourage the people of Lawrence to celebrate the cultural and economic asset of Farmer's markets to our community. Thank you. Okay, our next proclamation is for the, to proclaim Tuesday, August 13th, as Lawrence-Douglas County United Way Day. I believe we have Jeffrey Cornish.
Thank you. I'm Jeffrey Cornish. I'm the CEO for the United Way of Douglas County. The United Way was born in 1941 out of the Lawrence business community's desire to serve the most vulnerable members of our community. Back then, it was known as the Community Chest, and it was directly managed by the Lawrence Chamber of Commerce. In the early '50s, it was renamed the Lawrence United Fund, and in 1986, we became the United Way of Douglas County. Throughout the years, our fundamental mission has remained the same: to unite the people, business community, and human service organizations of Douglas County, and mobilize the caring power of this community in an effort to improve the health, education, and financial stability of all residents. On Tuesday, August 13th, at 7:30 a.m., and that's done on purpose so that people can get to work right after the celebration, but we will celebrate the launch of our Fall Workplace Campaign. The mayor has graciously agreed to say a few words at the event, and we're looking forward to that, so thank you for that support. All in all, we thank you for your continued trust in the United Way, and also for your continued support of the United Way. Thank you.
I'll go ahead and read the proclamation now. Whereas, the United Way of Douglas County was born in 1941 out of the Lawrence business community's desire to serve the most vulnerable members of our community. In 1986, the name United Way of Douglas County was adopted, and since then, the nonprofit agency continues to fight for the health, the education, and the financial stability of every person in Douglas County by making grants to health and human service agencies, increasing individual and organizational capacity through training, experimental learning opportunities, and uniting agencies in an effort to build efficiency in the delivery of direct services to those in need. And whereas, the United Way of Douglas County through its work seeks to eliminate barriers to care, educational opportunities, and the attainment of household financial security for every Douglas County resident. And whereas, the United Way of Douglas County will be commencing a workplace and general fundraising campaign on August 13th, 2019, to ensure vital monies are provided to Douglas County Health and Human Service Agencies charged with the provision of goods and services that sustain and advance local lives and livelihoods. Now therefore, I, Lisa Larson, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim August 13th, 2019, as the Lawrence-Douglas County United Way Day, and urge all citizens of this community to celebrate the 78 years of service that the United Way of Douglas County has provided to our community. All right, and our final proclamation tonight is for the 20th anniversary of our community health building.
I'm Cynthia Lewis. I'm the CEO of Douglas County Visiting Nurses. VNA was in its 24th year of service and its third home when growth once again prompted leadership to explore options for additional space. Our neighbors now were our neighbors then at 336 Missouri, and everyone was feeling the squeeze. VNA's ideal location has always been to be near Lawrence Memorial to facilitate the volume of care coordinated with our community hospital. Fast forward through months of planning and discussion, and more planning, to March of 1994, when a 52-page report with eight architectural solutions was put on the table, which prompted more planning and discussion. Fast forward again to July, when the thumbs up was given to a November ballot issue for a one-cent sales tax to create what is now the community health facility. Fast forward yet again to October 1997 for the groundbreaking at 200 Main, and one more time to August 1999, when VNA was the first agency to transition to our new space. It helps to have a relatively mobile workforce. Now in our 50th year of service, we have the privilege of celebrating the 20th year of this amazing community collaboration that gave VNA its true home, as we care for Lawrence and Douglas County residents in theirs.
Good evening, Dan Partridge, Director at the Lawrence-Douglas County Health Department. Anniversaries like this create opportunities to reflect on the journey and thank those responsible for helping us along the way. It's important to thank city commissions, past and present, for supporting the missions of our agencies. It's even more important to thank the public, past and present, for supporting us through their sales tax dollars. Your support has helped tens of thousands of people journey from crisis to recovery, from sickness to health, and from health to wellness. We deeply appreciate working with and for this community, and thank you for proclaiming the 20th anniversary of the facility.
Hello, I'm Patrick Schmitz, Burton Ash CEO. Thank you, Mayor Larson, Vice Mayor Hernandez, Commissioners Bowley, Herbert, and Soden. Thank you Administrator, City Administrator Owens, and your team for giving us the time tonight to be here. I am proud to join my fellow CEOs for this proclamation, recognizing the 20th anniversary of the community health facility. We are privileged to have shared the space for these past 20 years with two such wonderful agencies and community partners. We couldn't ask for better neighbors. We will be forever grateful for the community's support, which paved the way for the construction of the community health facility. I know I speak for all three agencies when I say what an honor it is to serve the residents of Douglas County. We all have our unique missions, yet we all share the common goal of bettering the lives of our fellow citizens. We are fortunate to live and work in a place that recognizes the need for community services, and especially community health services. We are certainly fortunate to have the generous support of our local government, including the City of Lawrence. Because of you and because of the community's support, thousands upon thousands of lives have been changed for the better these past 20 years. So thank you, City of Lawrence. Thank you, Commissioners. We couldn't do what we do without all of you.
Thank you, Patrick. So I'll go ahead and read the proclamation at this time. Whereas, the citizens of Lawrence and Douglas County have benefited from a combined 264 years of service from the Burton Ash Community Mental Health Center, the Lawrence-Douglas County Health Department, and the Douglas County Visiting Nurses Association, all occupants of the community health building. And whereas, on November 8th, 1994, the citizens of Lawrence and Douglas County voted to approve a one-cent sales tax, in part to support the construction of the community health building. And on November 13th, 1999, the community health building opened its doors to the public. And over the past 20 years, through the Burton Ash Community Health Center, Lawrence-Douglas County Health Department, and the Douglas County Visiting Nurses Association, over 780,000 people have been directly served by this facility. And whereas, in recognition of the 20th anniversary of the community health building, an open house entitled "Building 20 Years of Community Service" will be held on August 8th, 2019, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. Now therefore, I, Lisa Larson, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, along with my fellow Commissioners, hereby extend our deepest appreciation to the community for its public support of community health services, as expressed by the willingness to build the community health building. Thank you. All right, that ends our proclamations, and so we're gonna continue with the consent agenda. Let everybody get out. So all matters listed below on the consent agenda are considered under one motion and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on those items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Members of the public wishing to speak to an item that has been pulled off the consent agenda will be limited to three minutes for comments. Does anybody on the commission want anything removed? Anybody? Okay. Is there anybody in the public that would like to have something removed from the consent agenda for further discussion? Anybody else?
The whole C9 or...
Which one? Which one on C9?
B.
B? Anybody else, any of the public that would like to have something removed from the consent agenda for further discussion? Okay. So, do we have a motion?
I move that we adopt the consent agenda, including all claims, with the exception of item C9B.
Second.
Got a motion from Commissioner Herbert, a second from Commissioner Bowley. All in favor? Aye. Opposed. Passes unanimously. So we will begin with the consent agenda, item C9B.
My name is Michael Allman, speaking for Brook Creek Neighborhood Association. The Brook Creek Neighborhood Association asks that you deny the excessively dense RS3 zoning in this rezoning proposal. We would support RS5 from the lesser change table of the Development Code. Eastside neighborhoods are roughly at eight units per acre density, basically an RS5 density. RS3 is 15 units per acre, more dense than duplex zoning, and equal to the typical mobile home lot density. We are the densest area of town compared to the RS10, RS20, and RS40 at densities of four units, two units, and one units per acre, respectively. We don't want to be targeted for more density. Plan 2040 emphasizes infill and density rather than annexation to avoid urban sprawl into farmland and natural areas. If Lawrence wishes to increase the overall density of our urban footprint, the logical candidates for increased density are the sparsely settled low-density areas of RS10, 20, and 40. Five years ago, Lawrence spent several years of time and energy to devise urban agricultural regulations, to create a food policy council and a director that's hired, and to launch the Common Ground Program for Community Gardens. Does this community truly embrace local food, or was that just a passing fad that will shrivel in the absence of meaningful food garden space in excessively dense RS3 zones? RS3 density could allow up to 80% impervious coverage with the house footprint, driveways, sidewalks, patio, storage sheds, et cetera, regardless of what the current developer may have in mind. Crowded RS3 lots will result in reduced food garden space, overparked streets, scarce outside storage, and more stormwater runoff. The current developer may successfully shed floodwater away into Burrows Creek, but that will just exacerbate the downstream flooding, such as last week's 500-year flood event that flooded 11th and Haskell Avenue. The proliferation of the RS3 density in flood-prone Brook Creek neighborhood can have only bad consequences for downstream neighbors. Finally, we already have the greatest concentration of low-income housing, with some 450 units of mobile homes, public housing, tenants-to-homeowners, and Habitat for Humanity. The 1995 Affordable Housing Trust Fund Policy Resolution 5702 directs low-income housing to be scattered throughout the community and to avoid clustering. We call for a moratorium on affordable housing units in Brook Creek and other eastside neighborhoods.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Yeah, we need to speak with staff first, see what staff has to say.
Mayor, good evening. We'll take your direction. We're prepared to provide you the same presentation we provided at the Planning Commission. I would also remind you, as this is a quasi-judicial matter, that you need to declare your ex parte contact. But, well, first, I guess we can take your direction on how you'd like us to proceed.
I would like to hear what staff has to say.
Very well.
So we're gonna do ex parte.
I have an underreport. I met with Tim Keller and his nephew, Landon. We talked about the project. It's in the public record.
I did as well, and Michael Allman on this project. I did not meet with Tim's nephew, just him.
Okay.
I don't have any.
Okay, I met with Tim and his nephew, as well as Michael Allman, about the project and some of their ideas on it, as well as the concerns expressed by the Brook Creek neighborhood. Okay. No, we're gonna hear staff first, okay?
Is this gonna be the accelerated version?
Let's see what they've got. I wanna hear what they've... Let's see what they've got, I want to hear what they've got.
Move as quickly as I can. Good evening, sandy day with the planning office. The two items that were on the agenda, and I apologize that most of this presentation includes also the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, so we'll try and skip over those slides as we can. So there were two items that are associated with the items for your agenda this evening, the zoning and the CPA. The Planning Commission also considered a preliminary plat, which you just saw the image to. The property includes 1.6 acres located on the northwest corner of 19th Street and Bulleen Avenue. The property is located in the Brook Creek neighborhood, as you heard, at this southwest corner, but it also has proximity to the neighborhood...
Excuse me, I'm having a hard time hearing you. Melinda? Go ahead.
The property is also located in proximity to the woods on 19th, a small neighborhood, and then also to the Barker neighborhoods. This is an image of the existing platted subdivision lots, and we think that this was important to understand the context of this property. It does have industrial zoning today, but it was also platted with a concept of residential lots and streets that extended to the right-of-way, the railroad right-of-way, on the west side of that portion of the neighborhood. The existing zoning includes IG and IBP, although the property was originally developed with two detached dwellings. One of those was demolished earlier this spring, and there is an existing residence at the corner. This slide highlights some of the existing development and the residential patterns. The property, or I'm sorry, the image on the right-hand highlights some of the uses that we find in this immediate area along Bulleen. In that immediate vicinity, we have some automotive repair and some construction, sales, and service uses. There is a large vacant piece of ground that is owned by Salvation Army that is currently zoned RSO. And this slide on the left shows some of the residential densities that range anywhere from 1.1 dwelling units to acre to 8.4 dwelling units per acre in that surrounding area. Part of this project includes an evaluation of Horizon 2020 and the future land use maps. That was also related to the CPA, or the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, that talks about the land use, and we'll just kind of very quickly cover those slides. There is a disjoint between the industrial zoning and the residential land uses both in Horizon 2020 and in the Burrows Creek plan. That Comprehensive Plan Amendment was forwarded to you and was part of your consent agenda. Skip over some of this. As far as the zoning summary goes, the existing zoning, we did not find to be suitable in that industrial category, and that a residential zoning district would be more appropriate for this property. We have the residential use that has been there, the existing residence that has been demolished, and then the existing residence that's still there, that has an existing tenant but would ultimately be demolished to make way for the proposed development. The small lot residential development that is proposed is comparable to some of the area development that you find in this neighborhood. And then there would be restricted access to this area, there would be some limited on-street parking, but I would clarify that each lot would be required to provide off-street parking. So driveways are proposed, and that's one of the rumors that we have heard, that there would be no driveways with this project, and that would not be accurate. This highlights what the proposed development looks like in terms of some of the residential density. The RS3 district allows lots as small as 3,000 square feet, almost all of these lots exceed that by some amount. Some are almost 5,000 square feet, so it is a comparable size. The table on the right-hand side shows what the setbacks are for this project, and then how that building envelope looks. So you can see from this example that there is still quite a bit of green space that is required and associated with individual lots within the RS3 zoning district. The maximum impervious surface cover is actually 75%. The industrial zoning district would allow up to 85% of maximum impervious surface cover for an industrial lot. This project included a protest petition. The protest petition was actually not valid. We did review the project to make sure for that compliance. It was submitted in a timely manner. The green line, which you see on the slide, highlights what the boundary is for the protest, which is 200 feet. The properties that are marked in red hatch are property owners, that properties within that 200 feet that signed the protest petition, but they did not achieve the threshold of meeting the 20%. Only 14.4% of the total real property in that petition, a boundary, included the necessary signatures to be included in the protest petition. What that means is this body is not obligated to take an extraordinary measure if you choose to approve the rezoning. The Planning Commission forwarded a unanimous recommendation to you regarding the RS3 zoning for this property. We did do a quick calculation of the density, and the proposed density of this project, based on 1.6 acres, is just over eight dwelling units per acre. So while the RS3 does allow a particular maximum density, some of that is mitigated by having to meet setbacks and provide streets, necessary easements, and that holds some of that density down. Through the subdivision process, you can also impact the overall denseness of a particular project. Your actions on the rezoning would be to either approve it as proposed, return the application to the Planning Commission. If you choose to deny the application, you would need to have a supermajority vote to overturn that, and then if you also would need to prepare the necessary findings that go along with a different determination.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, thank you, Sandy. Actually, I did have a question.
Sure.
You said that the lots exceeded the 3,000 square feet. Do you know what the range of the lot sizes are?
Yes. Lot sizes, the smallest lot size is 3,058 square feet, and the largest lot is 5223 square feet.
Okay, thank you. And I had one more question. There was a concern for overparked streets. Is there going to be off-street parking for this location, or is that going to be not allowed? For off, yeah, on-street parking?
The on-street parking is certainly going to be somewhat limited to make sure that we have adequate maneuverability for fire apparatus, so it is entirely probable that you're going to see signing on one side and possibly part of the south side of the project for no on-street parking, to make sure that fire apparatus can move correctly through the subdivision if it becomes necessary. There is some limitations on the ability to park on-street.
So will the signage include actually a tow zone versus just a no parking?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Do you know where that question is decided?
Through the public improvement plans, as we start looking at the details of the design.
I think for public safety, it's important to include tow zones.
Yes, that has been a significant discussion throughout the subdivision plat design.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, thank you, Sandy. Okay, we'll open it up to public comment at this time.
Thank you for letting me speak. My name is John Rogers, I'm in the Villa Woods area that will be impacted by this development. The main concern that I have is observational experience with flooding. The land parcel that is, upon which my house is now, was not listed as a floodable property. In other words, I did not want to be in a flood zone, and according to the latest information from FEMA and the City of Lawrence, it isn't. However, in the last two extreme rains that we have had, the rainwater has indeed come up onto my property, and that is without the development that will take away nearly an acre of pasture land, and that's all it is at this point, which soaks in water and mitigates floods. If you put down 75% of hard surface in that development area that you're talking about, you're essentially going to sluice that water right into the creek, right next to my property, and it will flood, I guarantee you, because we're having, as my colleague said, 500-year floods now, and this is due to climate change, and if anybody disbelieves that, well, I don't think we're in the right place. I am concerned for my own property, but I'm concerned for several of the other property owners in the HOA in which I live. They will be flooded in the future if you put more high-density residential area in there. It should be taken out completely from either industrial or residential at this point, because we are going to have more floods, they are going to be larger, and they are going to be less pleasant for everyone along the Borough Creek's area, I guarantee it in the future. So my concern is, the floods are coming. So don't encourage them to wash away my garden in the back. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
No, I don't want, I want the PC.
Yeah, it's on.
Hit this light out of the way.
Here, just.
Oh, probably so. Thank you. Thanks for giving that up. Okay. Okay. Now, Jeff told me that the agenda, I should be able to pull the agenda up, because there's an item on the City Managers Report down at the bottom that has a, yeah, I just need to scroll all the way down there. All the way to the...
I apologize for the interruption earlier, thank you, for the opportunity to speak on this tonight. I'm Melinda Henderson, I still live in Brook Creek, we all haven't quite been washed away yet, but that's a concern of mine, and that's what I want to talk to you about tonight. My ask is that please consider holding off acting on either the text amendment or the rezoning until we have had adequate time to include the neighborhood, including Villa Woods, in the discussion, because we're all concerned about flooding. And there is a stormwater analysis that I don't think any of you have seen, but it was presented during the application. So, this doesn't include any options for anything over 100-year event, and Douglas County Emergency Management declared, as he said, 500 here, and we're going to have more of those. So, what we've got here is, I don't know if you all know, but Burrows Creek was created from a culvert. We spent a lot of money on that over a decade ago, and so that water in the creek now flows upstream, downstream, to where it meets with Brook Creek. That's between 12th and 11th, under Haskell. Now, I don't know if you've all seen the photos of what happened, but this is a photo from just food, and looking south on 11th Street to 1550 Road, okay? And that's just a stone's throw from where I live. I live just practically across the street from 12th Street, where you enter Brook Creek. So, they decided in this plan that the best thing to be done would be, instead of putting in a detention pond, let's just clean out the creek and make sure it flows. Well, okay, who's going to do that every year? Is city staff going to do it? Are tenants-to-homeowners going to have a cleanup day on the creek? We might lose a lot, but there should be room for detention pond, and I think we have to...
Thank you, Melinda, appreciate it. Other public comment?
My name's Ron Gacius, and I'm here on behalf of the City's Affordable Housing Advisory Board in support of this code change. This project is one of four projects that received funding recommendation during our July 8th Ahab meeting. It was one of six proposals. It was one of the highest-scoring proposals before us. It scored high for the experience of the partners. It scored high due to alignment with our goals, and it received very favorable support because it is one of the few direct collaborations, perhaps the first direct collaboration we have, of private sector and one of our leading not-for-profits in support of a mixed-use density project here in Lawrence. This project is important for a number of reasons. It's an infill project, it's a density infill project. It doesn't ghettoize a neighborhood, it's not asking to put 24, or 48, or 72 units on 1.6 acres. It's a neighborhood, it's a subdivision of individual homes. These are smaller lots with smaller homes, two essential components to controlling the price of affordable housing. Without smaller lots, without smaller residential living units, we will not achieve our goals of trying to house Lawrenceans. It also is an excellent example of leverage. We placed a very high standard, asking for a leverage ratio of six to one of our public dollars leveraging six other dollars on a project. This leverages six and a half dollars per public dollar, including, as envisioned by the project... This leverages $6.50 per public dollar, including, as envisioned by the project, $700,000 investment from the homeowners themselves for the originally proposed 7 units of affordable housing. It is important that we demonstrate that we can leverage projects with our public funds that are collaborations between the public sector and the private sector with high-density, multi-income infill projects. That is baked in to our goal-setting for our Affordable Housing Advisory Board, and it's baked in to the proposed Plan 2040. Without density, without infill, without multi-income, we can't achieve our goals of addressing the city's future housing needs.
Thank you. Thank you, Ron.
Thank you very much.
Any more public comment?
Good evening. My name is Christopher Doherty, and I live at 1300 Haskell Avenue in one of those old Haskell houses. And I'm glad that I was able to speak after this gentleman, because he was talking about infill, and he was talking about density and achieving goals and ratio. And I guess my main point, I'm only about two, three years into living in Lawrence, I guess my main point is, is there infill west of Massachusetts? Is there infill in this, or backfill, whatever you want to call it, in this gentleman's neighborhood? So why can't we spread it out? Because in the last three years that I've been here, I have noticed absolute demolition of cottages, building of high-density housing in East Lawrence. And I don't know any of the five of you, but I would bet a lot of money that none of you live in the Brook Creek neighborhood. This neighborhood is a fine neighborhood, and I feel as though the 42% of homeowners to tenants, or tenants-to-homeowners, all of that housing is on our backs. It's taking, it's going to flood this man's house, that nice lady out there. It's going to cause overcrowding, and it's not, what's the word I'm looking for? It is not evenly distributed throughout Lawrence. And everyone in Lawrence talks about, talks a good game, talks a good game about, you know, hey, we want affordable housing, like this gentleman said. We want people, you know, to get housing at an affordable rate. But is it spread evenly throughout Lawrence? It's not. And the reason I moved to that neighborhood is because one little cottage on a parcel. I didn't move there to have apartment buildings in my backyard. So my main concern is that it's not evenly distributed at all. So I don't know where you all live, but I guarantee you, you don't have any tenants-to-homeowners in your neighborhoods. I've got 42% in mine, and I'm all for it. But now it's time for you guys to bear the brunt. And you guys, when you talk about this backfill, I'm all for it. But here's the problem. We keep spreading west. Well, how come we've got acres and acres out there? Why don't you have more housing out there? But you keep sticking it in Brook Creek, and I'm not going to tolerate it. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hey, everybody. I'm Gretchen Lister, and I'm kind of a nervous Nellie right now, but I have to tell you, most importantly, I'm a Brook Creek owner, and I live in one of those beautiful tenant-to-homeowner homes. And just briefly, we'd tell you that Rebecca and her program has been a godsend for me. I'm a social worker, a single parent, two fabulous boys, and one with an autoimmune disease. And I have to tell you, we were living in a fabulous place over by Pinkney that I absolutely adored. Old, a lot of character, but a lot of muss, a lot of mildew, things of that nature, which sometimes come with our older properties. I was elated when I learned that I could ultimately, on my social work income, afford a new home. And I got a three-bedroom, three-bath, two-car garage, fabulous neighborhood, and it's new, and it's safe, and it's healthy, and my children love it. My mortgage payment is $750 a month. With the beautiful way they were built, my electric bill never exceeds 150, and I've got to run air 24/7, because babies are asthmatic, too. They're teenagers now. So I have to speak up for this. It's such an important program, and it has afforded opportunities for people, older, younger, single moms, even single dads. And ideally, I agree with you, I'd love it to expand. I'm a Lawrencean, I'd love to see more of these fabulous homes on the west side for obvious reasons. But let's not discourage what we're doing here, the importance of it, and the beauty of it. Love the location, love the school district, and I couldn't be happier. So just had to throw my two cents in and say, please give it serious consideration. We have a little water out back when we have a storm, absolutely. Back in the day, I'd have gone and waited in it. But within a day, it's gone, and it runs through, and things are fine. So please, as you consider this, think of all the families that's benefiting now and will benefit in the future. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Gretchen.
Hi.
Hi. I'd like to speak, too. My name's Andrea Pitt. I am also a resident of the Brook Creek neighborhood, and I'm also a current owner of the tenants-to-homeowners home along there. So a lot of my comments I prepared were in reaction to the letter that was distributed by the Brook Creek Neighborhood Association, which spoke about concerns about the density issues that were mentioned, over parked streets, scarce outside storage. And I just want to say that as a resident of that neighborhood, I don't share this view that the rezoning will, will cause these problems. In contrast, I do think that smaller yards might mean less need for lots of things to store outside, like yard maintenance items, and less opportunity to store things like non-functioning vehicles in yards, which I do see already in the neighborhood, so maybe that's a good thing. And it could also mean less dogs, since dogs seem to be a concern. That was mentioned in the letter, if you have smaller yards. The letter also mentioned that more crime may come to the area, and I find that that is a completely unfounded concern, and I'm very saddened that there is some sort of implication that these homeowners would bring more crime to the area. My tenant-to-homeowners neighbors are the best that I've ever had. We watch each other's homes, we talk and share tips and advice, we deliver each other's mail when it isn't delivered to the right place. So crime is really not an issue, but it was where I lived at before, when I was a renter. I could only afford to rent the, you know, worst rental situations here in town, and this is the safest I've ever felt in Lawrence, and it's because of my tenants-to-homeowners neighbors. There were concerns about too much affordable housing in Brook Creek. My opinion is that there is no such thing. Affordable housing is needed in this city. And when I was looking to buy a home four years ago, the only things that were in my price range were old rentals that needed to be repaired. I couldn't afford to buy a home and make those repairs. The tenants-to-homeowners home has been a really great investment for me, because it's a high-quality home, which has needed no major repairs. This home has set me up with a stronger financial future, since I'll likely see a return on this investment. I expect that that positive effect on my financial future will persist long after I move to another home, because that is the effect that this program has. Unlike others have suggested, I'm a resident of Brook Creek, and I'm in favor of more affordable housing in Brook Creek, because I think these houses will have a positive impact. I'm looking forward to meeting my new neighbors. And as to the issues of flooding, that, you know, there is a waterway behind the houses, and like Gretchen said, sometimes water is-
Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you, Andrea. Appreciate your thoughts.
Thanks.
Hi, Monty Sokup, 5750 Yankee Tank Court. I came to speak about this specific project, because I think it's somewhat of a watershed project. We've had our not-for-profit organizations working to try to house people in this community for 15-plus years. This project demonstrates a partnership between a private developer and a not-for-profit organization, which we have not seen the likes of before, which is the kind of project that's going to take to move the needle on affordable housing in Lawrence. So I think if we see a shutdown of this kind of project, it's going to have a chilling effect on our development community and their interest in being involved and becoming part of the problem. And like it or not, our not-for-profits and our housing trust fund cannot solve this problem without the market to help us do that. So I have a great concern about the negative impact that could be, could be realized if this project gets shut down because of some opposition to having it in someone's neighborhood. And I also say that actually, next week, I'm personally meeting with some developers that have property in West Lawrence, and we're trying to get something started to get some of these houses in West Lawrence. But it also takes a demonstration project like this to demonstrate that it can work, the partnership between the not-for-profit organization and the for-profit developers. So this is, there's a lot more at stake, in my opinion, in this project and seeing it move forward than your average run-of-the-mill housing project that's built by a not-for-profit alone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Chris Flowers. I am for affordable housing, and it seems like it would fill that need. And also about the, the lack of outside garden space, I would just like to say that any marijuana user can tell you, you can grow a garden inside with the right lights and hydroponics. Thank you.
Other public comment?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Ted Boyle, North Lawrence Improvement Association. And I'd just like to say, I agree with, we agree with Michael Alman and Brook Creek. These houses should be built on 5,000, RS5. We've got Habitat Houses in North Lawrence we're very proud of. They're built on 7,000 to plus 5,000 square feet. And also, we have tenants-to-homeowners on Elm Street, they're on 5,000-square-foot lots. And we've also got some Section 8 housing, and they're on 5,000 to 7,000-square-foot lots. So you talk about stormwater. Well, North Lawrence probably knows more about stormwater than any other neighborhood in Lawrence, Kansas. So the higher the density, the more runoff you're going to have. And we're a fine example of that. And pump, everything has to be pumped out of North Lawrence, and the more development we have, the closer development we have, the more runoff we have. And Habitat, when they first put their first houses in on Comfort Lane, they came to us with 5,000-square-foot lots. We said, no, you know, we'd really like to see 7,000 square foot on your houses. And they said, no problem. They went back to the drawing board, and those houses are on 7,000-square-foot lots. And that's to alleviate the stormwater. Now, this RS3 zoning, we've got one house on Elm Street that was snuck in on us on a lot that is 25 feet wide and about 90 feet long. And it's got a two-story house, a patio, and a garage on the back of it. And it is constantly flooding the neighbors to the east all the time. And the neighbors on the east are looking at some litigation, taken at the court, civil court, to do something about it. And, you know, that's what, not, North Lawrence is not about that. I've lived in North Lawrence 73 years, and the density, we mostly RS7 properties because of the stormwater problem we have. The mother earth takes care of that stormwater if you don't pave it over or put a rooftop on it. So 5,000 square foot is the norm for us. RS3, we don't want to ever see that in North Lawrence again. So thank you.
Porter, Sandra, can we pull up that image? Is there, is it on here already? Nicholas Ward, by the way. I just wanted to give you, these are some renderings that were done of the project. I know before, we were just kind of looking at a bird's-eye view of what the layout of the lot spacing would be. There are no interior plans. We haven't gotten that far in the project yet, in terms of the process of planning all that out, but this is the representative sizes of what these homes will be, and this is the space. And so this gives you a little bit better view of what it looks like than just seeing the bird's-eye view, two-dimensional diagram. I am also a resident of the Brook Creek neighborhood. I worked for tenants-to-homeowners. Before I worked there, I was a board member of tenants-to-homeowners. I've, in my work, I've been a filmmaker, a community organizer. I'm currently working with the Parks Department to build a DIY community skate park in Brook Creek neighborhood. And I'm, I don't even own a home, I'm just a renter, but the opportunity to have lower rents and to be in a place that is well-maintained and studded has allowed me to do all these community projects, and so that's something I'm really thankful for. And I think that while the letter that was written on behalf of Brook Creek Neighborhood Association states that it's representative of the Brook Creek Neighborhood Association, I think that you'll find that there are many people, including the 24 people who are tenants-to-homeowners homeowners in the Brook Creek neighborhood, that don't necessarily feel the way that that letter states. So I would ask you to consider some of that, to think about some of the things that were written out in the BBC Market Analysis, the Housing Market Analysis, and what it says about relaxing some restrictions on, on lots. And what we're talking about with RS3 is something that's already allowed within our zoning. We're not asking for a special permission with this zoning size. And so while there may be things that need to be addressed, if there are concerns with stormwater and the planning, this is, we're not asking for any special rules or anything like that here, and just to consider the need for affordable housing in the community and how it affects the people that you represent, and the positive benefit that programs like tenants-to-homeowners have for them. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Linda Troxel. I am a three-term board member on tenants-to-homeowners. I'm also a senior. I have a house on Ridge Court, and that's just a few blocks away from the Cedarwood Senior Housing Project, which I might mention has really brought the neighborhood up. It was kind of sliding, and that particular neighborhood is now looking a lot different. That was an extreme site. There was a lot of water going down that site, and tenants-to-homeowners was very serious about handling the water on the site and doing a lot of remedial work. So they are excellent builders. My background is, I was in architecture and in barrier-free design. I believe in providing housing in a community for a community, not only to house people with special needs, seniors, singles, and the people that are going to be living in these little houses are going to be like one to two people, maybe a senior, downsizing couple. These are people who still want to be part of the community and can provide a lot of services. I, I myself volunteer in many capacities, and so do a lot of my friends. So I want, if possible, you guys will consider supporting this project. I totally support it myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Other public comment on this item? Okay, we'll bring it back up to the Commission. I did have a question for staff, if you could help us out here or help me out. Can you discuss some of the stormwater issues and what was done, or what is being done to possibly address those?
Throughout the development review process, there are a number of studies that are required to be submitted as part of the design review. Those are technical studies that are reviewed in-house by, at the staff level. Stormwater drainage study is one such study. Was submitted, and it was reviewed by our engineering staff, and I also had consultations with Matt Bond, the city's- with Matt Bond, the city's stormwater engineer. City standards required to design for the 10-year storm. That is what this project is expected to do, and that is what was required by city code. And public improvement plans that would come forward with this project at a final plat stage would be designing to that level. This property is located at the top end of the watershed district, so its location and its proximity to the existing floodplain, this property is not encumbered by the floodplain, but it is very close to it. Detention was not required for this project per that engineering review. As the stormwater travels further downstream and reaches 12th and Haskell, there is a change in the profile of the stream. And at that constricting point is where some of that flooding happens. And that conversation that I had with Matt earlier about whether or not there are engineering solutions to some of that flood, flooding that is occurring at 11th and Haskell and further down. The property is undeveloped essentially today, so that yes, there is an impact in that change. But it is designed to meet city standards as they are in code today.
Just to reiterate Sandy's stand a little bit, the notion, and I'm not a stormwater engineer, but the idea, if you're this close to the primary drainage channels, to get the water to that channel as quickly as possible. So, what you'll see, and I also wanted just to show you the preliminary plat, it's, it's related, but you're not seeing that tonight. So I want to make sure that you saw some components of the plat. The stormwater is collected in, in the road here. And then basically just placed right into the, right into the channel. The idea being to get it there as quickly as possible while other collection is happening in the system itself. So that's the stormwater response. I've also highlighted, added the sizes of the lots. There were some trade-offs on the plat design to make sure that the affordable units to the north, to help with the funding and the, and the offset, that their market rate units were a little bit larger down here. These are pretty close to the product we're seeing in west, far, far west Lawrence, in RS5 zoning district, only off by 1,000 to 1,500 square feet in terms of lot size. So it's important to know what product is proposed here that this zoning helps support and accommodate. And just for Madam Mayor, if I may, the idea with the fire truck, and by the way, this RS3 product is taking quite a bit more thought between us, and we've had a contractor in our meetings, because they need to really think about driveway location to maximize the amount of cars that the local street can handle. The street width is not changing from our, being waived from our standard. It's 27-foot wide, back, back curb to back curb street. So there could be parking permitted and allowed on the street here. Part of the no parking area would have to be around this area where a fire truck will have to come in. We've had to be a little creative about getting a fire truck turned around in this hammerhead, back up, and then pull back out. And that's where we've had to be a little creative to accommodate this RS3 project as well. So with that, we'll answer any more questions.
Okay, thank you. So that surface, that's surface water runoff, it's not underground storm? Is that correct?
It would be collected in an underwater pipe and then taken out. And then individual lots will have their own permeables. And I also will, will note that we're not, we have not waived any sidewalk requirements. And there's actually a trail from here to Burrows Creek Trail, just in its closest proximity. It was just too expensive to cross the drainage area, but that was, I think, a good offset as well.
Okay, thank you.
So the existing zoning for this has the opportunity to cover 85%?
That's correct.
Okay. So this is actually a reduction of the coverage as we make the zoning change or consider it?
Thank you. Any thoughts on this?
I'm excited for tiny houses.
I don't think you're going to solve an affordable housing crisis without incorporating more than just governmental bodies. That comment was made by one gentleman. I'm sorry, I didn't catch his name.
It was Monty?
Yeah, thank you.
Monty Sokup, yeah.
I mean, that, that comment is spot-on, that you are not going to solve this with the Lawrence City Commission. It's not going to happen. That unless you incorporate developers into the mix, this problem is not going to be addressed with the amount it needs to be addressed to actually move the needle. This is the opportunity to actually put a project on display that not only meets the six-to-one ratio of leveraging, but exceeds that, invites the development community into the mix, and, and at the same time, actually reduces the amount of impervious surface that can be developed on the existing property. That while it is a pasture right now, that is true, that is likely not the end game for this property, regardless of zoning. So, as it stands, I do support this project.
I'd just like to say, I'd like to welcome tenants-to-homeowners into my neighborhood. I've been talking to them and really am hoping that they're gonna be making some inroads. And I look forward to good news on that. I'll just put it that way. So, I'm in support of this project.
I am as well. And I think that it's not a question of either/or. I think that we have to take the opportunities that come before us. Obviously, not any opportunity, but certainly good opportunities. And I think that this is one of them. And remain committed to ensuring that we have scattered affordable housing throughout the community. As someone who lived across the street from Brook Creek neighborhood for 13 years, in a neighborhood that didn't even have a neighborhood association, I can, I have lived in that area, in that neighborhood. And I'm thankful that there are so many affordable homes there. I look forward to continuing to scattering that throughout the community as well.
So since, since I've been on the commission, we've been talking about affordable housing and, and trying to find ways to support it and make it more a part of our community. And we've also been talking, this commission has also been talking about scattered affordable housing. How many times have we used this term up here? And we continue to watch the Ahab Board and listen to what they have to say. And I know they're working on the scattered aspect of it. It's obviously not here yet. But I do agree that the, the one way we're going to be able to do it is through private and public partnerships. And we're now starting to see that, more discussions with the public and the private in order to accomplish that. We just started receiving our funding this past summer, June, I believe it was, when we started to get the tax money for the affordable housing. So we're very, very early in this process. And I'm fully expecting that the Ahab Board's going to come up with some policies and procedures as to how to get that west, because I too am dismayed that we constantly see this happening on the east side of town. And from what I see in the open, the ribbon cuttings I go to on these, they're fantastic. They've got, they're great housing. And they provide great uplifts to the, to the neighborhoods, I think, from what I see. I'm, I'm going to support this project, but I'm, I'm going to say again, we have got to start working more on scattered housing, because I find it really hard to continue down this road if we don't make a more concerted effort to do that. But I think this is a great project and I'm going to support it.
I move, we approve the request to rezone approximately 1.61 acres from IG and IBP to RS3 district based on the findings presented in the staff report and adopt on First Reading Ordinance Number 9696. Tekken.
Motion by Commissioner Soden, a second by Commissioner Nanda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, we're going to go on to public comment. Addressing, addressing the commission. The public is allowed to speak to any items or issues except those scheduled on the consent agenda. I'll let folks get out. Sorry. Not quite yet, Ted. Let me get folks out the room and then we'll get going here.
And to the folks that are sitting outside, a ton of seats just opened up if you're having any trouble hearing out there.
So the public is allowed to speak to any items or issues except those scheduled on the consent agenda or the regular agenda portions of the agenda after first being recognized by the mayor. Each person will be limited to three minutes for public comment. As a general practice, the commission will not discuss, debate these items, nor will the commission make decisions on items presented during this time. Rather, they will refer the items to staff for follow-up if necessary. Individuals are asked to come to the microphone, sign in, and state their name and address. Speakers should address all comments and questions directly to the commission. So public, general public comment.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. I'm here to complain about the underpass. We've had, been operating on one pump for over two weeks. And the deal is, what I hear is, you have to go to Germany for these parts, for these pumps that are under the underpass. What's the deal? I mean, this thing has, I've been inoperable for over three weeks. I drove through there the other night at 5:30, 6 o'clock in the morning when that storm come through and before the torrential rains hit. And you could drive through it. 30 minutes later, there was five feet of water in that underpass. All that traffic has to be routed through North Lawrence, down to 7th Street, across the railroad tracks, and deal with the trains. And then the first responders have to come over there. And fortunately, when I was driving around, I met the fire truck. So them guys are on it. But this pump's still sitting down there under the underpass with no parts. I understand they have to come from Germany. So, how come we don't update those pumps? And the other deal is, where's the backup generator? This has been something I've been complaining about for years. And the city lied to us when the intersection was redone at Second Locust by the last stormwater engineer, saying that those pumps were upgraded, updated, and we had a backup generator on site. That was full of it. And we're getting tired of listening to that. You know, we've been dealing with this stormwater, different sections of North Lawrence. Now the underpass is a sore, sore thumb. And maybe we ought to use that $42 million that has popped up, you know, that you guys didn't know about. So, that's my gripe.
Ted? Other general public comment?
Dan, Dennenberg 2702, University Drive. I think I've lost track of what I wanted to talk about. One of the topics this evening is the 2020 city budget. That's quite a comprehensive document.
Dan, if this is, if this is about the 2020 budget, we're going to have that on the, it's on the regular agenda, so you would need to wait to talk about it then.
Okay, I'll talk about something else. One of the things I do frequently is I send reports on code enforcement, or what I perceive to be violations of codes. I also frequently call the police to report cars blocking sidewalks and to report cars or vehicles blocking the yards. I don't know what happens to these. The code enforcement office seems to operate in the dark. I don't know where there is a public record of what reports they've received, what actions have been taken, what appeals have been taken, what's the results of those appeals. I think that's just plain baloney. I think the neighborhood and the community at large should be protected. We have a limited number of code enforcement officers. That's by design. The landlords and the short-term rental crowd, they don't want codes enforced. They want to avoid it. And last week, I looked at piles of trash and junk stacked along my street. And it finally got removed, but it was there for quite a long time. And all of these places are rentals. And I wonder how many of those units in the Brook Creek will wind up as rentals or short-term rentals? What's to prohibit it? The other thing that wasn't mentioned is the state legislature. We all know that the state legislature, in essence, works for the real estate crowd. It's like the old days when they worked for the Atchison, Topeka, and Santa Fe. So, we need to do something to raise the curtain on code enforcement, to see what's going on and to have a public record of what's happening. I don't care if my name's out there as doing reports, because I will continue to do reports.
To the land trust, the tenants-to-homeowners, has to stay in that, in perpetuity. So they can't be turned into any other type, type of housing. So, any other general public comment?
Hi, I'm Chris Flowers. I've heard that in some cities, it's legal for women to go topless. And part of the reason is that it decreases the stigma of breastfeeding. And I know what you're thinking, I'm just advocating for this so I can see some boobs. But the type of people that are okay with being nude in public are usually the last ones you want to see naked. My question is, why are boobs dirty unless there's a baby attached to them? I say if boobs with a baby attached are allowed, then allow all boobs. Breast by themselves are not sexual. It's dirty perverts like me that makes them that way. If men can be topless, why not women? Thank you.
Any other general public comment? All right, we'll start off with our regular agenda items. Item number one, receive the 2018 comprehensive annual financial report and audit findings from our auditor.
Good evening, Jeremy Wellmuth, City Finance Director. Want to give just a few brief comments about the 2018 comprehensive annual financial report. And then I'll turn it over to Kristen Hughes and Stevie Reed with RSM, who will give their presentation on the audit. Excuse me. Before I get into my comments, I just want to remind everyone that the comprehensive annual financial report is essentially three sections. The first section is an introductory section that covers a transmittal letter, kind of gives some information about the city, a list of principal officers, organization chart, just all that introductory information. The second section of the, of the CAFR is probably the most informative section for our purposes tonight, the financial section, that starts with the audit report that they'll share with you in just a few minutes, covers the management's discussion and analysis, which I think is probably the easiest place to go if you want to get a synopsis of what happened over the last year. And then the actual financial statements, followed by the notes. And the notes are really a good area to have some context provided. So I wanted to share with you just a few of the financial highlights that are highlighted in the management discussion and analysis portion of the CAFR that can be found on page four of the document. The first note, you'll see assets and deferred outflows compared against liabilities and deferred inflows. At the end of 2018 is $419 million, excuse me, $419 million. This is what's classically known as the net position of the city. And of that amount, $21.5 million, or 5%, is available for any use. It's not restricted to debt. It's not restricted to capital assets. It's not restricted by any other means. So it would be what your unrestricted net assets are for the organization. After we talk about total net assets, then we talk about the, the net position, which increased by $44 million. The largest increase to the net position was capital projects, primarily the Waukerusa plant coming online. In addition to that, enterprise funds, including the water utility, the stormwater utility, sanitation increasing $12.8 million. And then our OPEB obligation actually increased And then our OPEB obligation actually increased 7.4 million due to the new GASB rules that were put into effect for this audit. Beyond that, the city's governmental activities, which are essentially everything that are not ran like a business, the combined net position was $234 million, which is an increase of 33 million. And this was primarily due to capital assets. And the business-type activities, as I mentioned before, also including the golf course and our internal service funds, the net position was 184 million, which was an increase of about 10.5 million. Beyond that, the next footnote is that the fund balance in the general fund was $25 million, or 37% of expenditures. As you'll see in our budget amendment tonight for, for 2019, we're recommending that the excess over the cap be moved to capital projects to further the CIP in 2020. And lastly, due to changes in auditing guidelines, our net pension obligation at the end of the fiscal year was 69.5 million. And we'll begin tracking that year over year as we do other things within the audit, now that those new rules have taken effect. Lastly, what I'd like to point out, and we'll be talking about this further during the budget presentation to come, but this is, I apologize, it's a little too large. I don't want to make it so small you can't read it, but this is on page six of the audit, and it is essentially a synopsis of net position. So you have cash and other assets, capital assets equal your total assets, then your liabilities, and then you get into net position. And what I want to highlight is, in 2017, the city was showing $61 million in unrestricted net assets in the enterprise funds. However, we believe that that should have been closer to, I believe, 20 million. The difference being that the bonds that have been issued, those bonds are supposed to be reported as invested in capital assets. And so you'll see that in 2018, that's where we moved it. That's the big difference between the 109 million to the 163 million. And the unrestricted is that cash that we believe was misclassified, and you'll see that went down as well in 2018. And so we'll get into this further when we get into the budget about what that means. But those are the primary comments that I had. I'll turn it over to the auditors now, and then we'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Good evening, I'm Kristen Hughes with RSM. And as Jeremy mentioned, I've got Stevie Reed back there as well I wanted to introduce. So as far as the financial statements, I know you're probably familiar, the city's obviously comprehensive annual financial report, or CAFR, as it's referred to, is a large, significant document. Jeremy has really recapped, I think, the financial information he wanted to highlight. So I was not going to go through this in great detail, but certainly happy to answer any questions. I mean, just a couple of things that I would echo and follow up with Jeremy. You'll see at the beginning, as he mentioned, our audit opinion, the city did receive what's referred to as an unmodified opinion under AICPA standards, also referred to as a clean opinion. And what that means is that the financials are materially presented in accordance with GAAP as required, so no material deviations noted. And then, as he mentioned, management's discussion and analysis, I would also echo that, that is a good area to look at, where management goes through and analyzes any significant changes, if you were to compare 2018 results to the prior year, and highlights any significant fluctuations. And the financials themselves, as he's noted there, so just as a reminder, the areas referred to as governmental activities, that is going to be all these cities' governmental funds combined. So your report does show individual balance sheets and income statements for each and every of your governmental funds that you have established. Those are shown in the report, and then governmental activities represents those all combined together. Business activity is similar, you have individual enterprise funds. Again, you show the, the users of the financials, individual balance sheets and income statements for each of those funds. Business type represents those combined together. So as I said, in the CAFR, you'll find really financials for the city combined altogether, as well as each of the individual funds you budget for. The footnotes themselves, I mean, there's a lot of significant information. At a high level, you'll see detailed, you provide detailed information to your users regarding cash and investments that you're in, capital assets, debt issued by the city, there's just required disclosures that GASB has identified. You've included all those. The other item I would note is that the, the city has historically applied for the GFOA certificate and has been awarded that. I'm sure management has already submitted the current year one. That is something I like to note, the GFOA certificate program, there are additional requirements when you apply for that. There's really going above and beyond as far as the information you include in your report. They have a very detailed and thorough checklist that you have to meet the criteria in order to be awarded that certificate. So as I noted, you'll see here in this report that the certificate was awarded for the prior year. Bond rating agencies usually do look at that. Again, it's, it's an indication that management has focused on the preparation of this document and all the financial requirements included in that. So as far as footnotes as well, there's detailed information. He mentioned the net pension liability. So you provide information to the users as far as the keeper's pension plan that the city participates, and the obligation you have for the employees that participate in that. And then as well as the OPEB obligation he mentioned, that is retirees allowed to stay on the city's health insurance plan. So you have information included in there as to how that plan works. And then at the very back, there is what's referred to as the statistical section, that is an unaudited section of the report. But some users find it helpful, it's, a lot of the schedules show a 10-year analysis of key information such as revenue trends, information about the city's debt. So it is helpful because it can show a 10-year trend as far as where your significant revenue sources are, principal taxpayers, et cetera. Next, what I'd like to really primarily spend time on is a recap of the audit for you. So if you have the documents that were distributed, I was going to start with the smaller bound document. This is referred to as the compliance report. And just for your information, the city does expend, the city receives and expends federal grant expenditures. So under accounting rules, if you receive and expend more than $750,000 in a year, you're required to have what's referred to as a single audit. And that means as part of the financial statement audit, we take a look at the federal grant expenditures as well. And this information is usually all summarized in this compliance report. So what I'd like to point you to, jumping ahead to page nine, the first couple pages are the letters that we issue that go through the results of the audit. Nine, though, I think is just a nice, quick kind of narrative that's going to walk you through the results of the audit that I'll kind of go through as well. So you'll see, starting at the top, as I noted, the first, the first part starts with the financial statements, so.
Can we get that on the Elmo?
Oh, sure, I'm sorry. I can move it as I walk through the document.
Thank you.
So again, this is a summary of the information you'll find in here. So it starts with the financial statement. So as we already discussed, this discloses what type of report was issued, meaning what I mentioned earlier, that the financials received an unmodified opinion. So that is summarized there. Internal control over financial reporting. As a reminder, the purpose of a financial statement audit is not to give an opinion on internal controls. That's, that's not the purpose of an audit. However, we do take internal controls into consideration as part of our testing. And auditing standards do require us that if we become aware of any items that are classified as a material weakness, significant deficiency, or material noncompliance, that is required to be communicated to you as part of the audit. So you'll see here, we'll go into detail further, but there were material weaknesses that were identified this year as far as internal control over financial reporting on the financials. Next, moving into the federal awards, very similar classifications. You'll see here if any areas are identified as far as how the grants were administrated, administered, excuse me, if any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies were identified, they're disclosed in this report, and you'll see there was a material weakness reported. This here at the bottom is showing you, and I just made a note for you to see here, so we do not audit 100% of your federal grant expenditures each year. Auditing standards require us, you'll see at the bottom, the city was identified as a low-risk auditee based on your results the last couple of years, which for the auditor means were required to audit at least 20% of your federal expenditures. So two major programs were identified this year, and what that means is, these were the two specific grants that we audited during the 2018 audit. And just for your informational purposes, that was approximately 52% of the total expenditures you had this year. And an earlier page shows your total expenditures for the year. I believe it was around 4.5 or 5 million. Let's see. So moving into the document, the rest of this is going to summarize the deficiencies that I noted on page nine. So going through these, there was a material weakness identified just due to the significant number of audit adjustments that came up during the process. So really what that is saying is, we start the audit, we're provided with a trial balance that the city has prepared, and in going through our audit testing, there were significant adjustments identified through work performed that resulted in entries and adjustments being made to the financials. So just to clarify, those audit adjustments are, have been reflected in what you're seeing as the final end product. So they're incorporated into the audit work. But really, as part of our auditing standards, we're required to take into consideration, if these adjustments were not identified during our testing, would the financials have been materially different if these had not been recorded? And so due to the both, really, we kind of evaluate the number, we're looking a lot at the quantity, what was the dollar impact on whichever fund it impacted, et cetera. So we did evaluate those as a material weakness due to the amount that was noted. The next item you'll see, also reported as a material weakness, is identified here as reconciliation of cash. And really, the condition, the condition paragraph is kind of really the easiest way to see what the actual issue was. So you'll note here that the city was approximately 12 months behind on reconciling cash and investment accounts during the current year, primarily the operating account. And so as part of the audit, they did bring in a third party to help reconcile those accounts. You'll see it goes on to say, at the conclusion of that process, there was an unreconciled variance that has been noted there. Really, you know, a lot of what we talked through with the finance department is monitoring and timely reconciliations of cash is a critical part, process, is part of a city, and really any organization, making sure that you're timely looking at the disbursements going out and the receipts coming in. And so really, really monthly reconciliations of your bank accounts is always just going to be a critical control over making sure all those are tracked. So again, there's just exposure there when that is not being done on a timely basis. The third item you'll see here, there was actually a restatement. And what that means is, the previous auditors, we restated some of the numbers they had previously reported specifically due to capital assets and a couple tax revenue items that were noted, specifically capital assets during the current year audit. There were capital assets identified related to prior years that had not been captured in the balance sheet. So those were of a significant enough amount, approximately 16 million, that management restated the beginning amount to note, to clarify, that those related to prior years, they weren't current year transactions, and so they're, they were amended to account for that. And then the tax revenue item is really just a timing issue. You know, things like sales tax, there's usually a two-month delay on when, when that is received by the city. And proper accounting is that you would record receivable for that. And so that is being done now going forward. On the next page, the item that I had noted as a material weakness specific to the federal awards. So on your schedule of expenditures of federal awards, you are only to report the expenditures you had that were specifically, directly from federal granting agencies versus, you also have instances where the state passes through non-federal funding for you. So just when we started our audit, there was a, you'll see the dollar amount there, approximately 1.4 million that was originally included on that schedule that wasn't actually federal expenditure. So again, management has adjusted that for the final Sifa amount reported, but that has been reported as an error just due to that adjustment identified during the audit. And lastly, an instance of noncompliance as it relates to the grant funding, you'll see here, and this is really something that was communicated directly between HUD and the city, there was just a delay as far as reports being submitted and the accuracy of some of those reports. So this has been summarized as well. Again, it's my understanding that management has, has submitted all the correct information for the delinquent reports, but that has been shown as an item just that came up during the audit as well. So that's the, that's the information included. And I guess at the end, you will see auditing standards require the city to prepare what's referred to as a corrective action plan. So I think you would find that of interest on pages 14 and 15. Management of the city is required to prepare their corrective response on each of those findings, and so you'll see those, those items summarized on those last two pages of the report. The last document I was going to walk you through is, is the staple packet. This is referred to as the auditor communications. So similar to what we just went through in the compliance report, there's really kind of two main themes here going through, just, there are always going to be certain required topics that an auditor should communicate at the end of the process to walk you through if there was any results in these areas. And then again, it summarizes if any, if any items came up. So on the first page here, this is just a reminder, when it refers to the respective responsibilities, just for your understanding, before the audit is started, both the city and, and our firm entered into what's referred to as an arrangement letter. And that's just important because it identifies the auditing standards that we follow as we're conducting our work, as well as the responsibilities of the city. And that's primarily going to look at the responsibilities that you have over the accuracy of the financial information, as well as the information we receive when we're performing our audit. So this is just a reminder that that is all, you know, identified before this process starts. At the bottom of the, of the first page here, significant accounting estimates. Again, this is just to point out that there are certain either balances or transactions in the financials that involve a component of subjectivity, or management is having to perform some kind of estimate. So you'll see examples here. You know, the first one, depreciable useful lives of capital assets. Management has to estimate how long they, they think capital assets are going to last, and therefore how, how long they should be depreciated over. So this is to note for you that as a part of the audit, these are significant areas, we do take a look at them as part of the audit. We're making sure that they are accounting for these consistent with how you have approved any internal policies. And they're also just making sure they seem consistent with, with other cities and other, other entities we would see similar to the city of Lawrence. On the next page, this is to note for you, if you were to compare the current year financials to the prior year, if you adopted any new accounting standards that impacted the report, and therefore what that was. So you'll see here, as Jeremy mentioned, you did implement GASB 75. And again, that related specifically to OPEB. So the city has updated its accounting for how it records for the liability that is projected by an actuary as it relates to healthcare that you provide to your retirees. As I mentioned, this, the audit adjustments, so after this, this does refer to, you're provided with a copy of all the recorded audit adjustments that came up that I did mention earlier. There's also what's referred to as uncorrected misstatements. What these are is, there may be additional items that came up during the audit, but they're immaterial. So management concluded they were immaterial, not material enough to, to change the financials for, and we concluded that that conclusion was reasonable. So instead, they're just summarized here for you as just additional items that were noted during the audit. And really, the last couple pages here, we provide you with any significant written communications between the firm and management. So at the end, you'll see what's referred to as the management representation letter. Again, this is management confirming that the financials are complete and accurate to the best of their knowledge, as well as all the information we were provided with as part of the audit process. And then if any other deficiencies were noted that didn't rise to the level of a material weakness or significant deficiency, those have also been noted in the back here. I know that's a lot of information for a year's worth of an audit. I'm happy to answer any, any questions you have.
Thank you for this presentation. I appreciate it. This is the first year that your firm has audited the city of Lawrence.
Correct, correct.
And it's my understanding that it took a little bit longer than had been anticipated. Is that accurate?
You know, yes, some of it, I would say most of it related to what I mentioned on the, the timing of the cash reconciliations. You know, we, we worked through when our, our scheduled field, what we call field work, when we were on-site to do our testing, and not all of that information was yet available. And I mean, there's a lot of learning curves in a first-year audit. I think we've certainly had some conversations with, things we'll work through with the city and, you know, being ready as far as timing and things like that. Yes, the, the original goal was to issue by June 30th, and, you know, instead, obviously, we wanted to make sure the information was accurate before that was finalized.
I appreciate that. I think it's worth the wait. And I was very interested in the information, but tried to be very patient as well. We'll see you again next year.
Yes.
That's great.
Yes, yes.
That's good, good to know.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Okay, well, I appreciate your time. And if questions, like I said, depending on if you've had a chance to look through all this, I'm more than happy to answer questions after the fact, after you've read it over the weekend, or anything that comes up, just don't hesitate to reach out.
I appreciate that offer.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? We'll open it for public comment. Public comment on this item? No public comment, then we'll bring it back up here. I think one thing that I would like to see if the commission would be interested in, since they have given us some material weaknesses that we are working on, obviously, as well as a corrective action, is whether or not we can get an update on that in about six months to see where we're at with those items. Would that be possible? If you're interested in that?
I think it'd be a good idea. I actually'd like to meet with finance staff to get a better understanding of myself before then, so. If that's okay, I'd like to do that.
Any other comments on this item? So we're just to receive it, so do we need to have a motion or anything?
I would move that we receive the 2018 CAFR and audit findings from RSM.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Herbert, second. Motion by Commissioner Herbert, a second by Commissioner Bowley. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, we're on to item number two. Consider the following items related to the budget. So we're going to start with 2A, and we are going to consider, consider these all separately. Is that correct? Is that my understanding?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. So, let's start with our PowerPoint.
Yeah. All right, as you can see on the agenda, we have quite a few items to get through tonight. We're going to start by talking about the Art Center letter that was requested at the last meeting. Then we'll get into the public hearing and the first reading of the ordinance to amend the 2019 budget. And then we'll start working our way through the 2020 process. We're going to start with stormwater and solid waste, and then we're going to have a presentation on water and wastewater. Those rates won't be presented tonight for your consideration, but we just want to give an update on that, then the parking ordinance. Then we'll talk about the city commission salary ordinance, and then finally, open up the public hearing for the 2020 budget and talk about that ordinance. So just a reminder of the process, we started, the first meeting on the 2020 budget was May 14th with the presentation of the CIP. That was followed by the June 18th meeting, the city manager's recommendation of the budget, followed by the July 9th update, which included the work groups' recommended changes. July 16th, we had the establishment of the maximum expenditures. We were authorized to public, to publish the public hearing that's going to occur tonight. And then here we are tonight to discuss these items. And if they're all approved on first reading, then on August 13th, they'll all be up for second reading. Just one more reminder that the state law requires that the budget be adopted by August 25th. So that's sort of the, the backstop deadline, if you will. We had a couple of follow-up items we wanted to talk about. There were some questions that came up throughout the budget process that we wanted to make sure the information was relayed back to you all. I believe one of the commissioners had a question about the life cycle for refuse trucks. And the answers that staff prepared are that it varies, but on average, it's around 10 years. The cost of the fleet currently is about $10 million. The average replacement to maintain that fleet, if it replace, 10 million every 10 years, would be $1 million a year. Obviously, increases will go up with inflation, and the fleet is currently a little bit behind, so there's some catch-up provisions in the CIP. There was also a question about the appropriate use of the transient guest tax. The city chartered out of state law, and so Charter Ordinance 30 is the current standing ordinance that governs how transient guest tax funds are spent. And we've highlighted the pertinent part for you, that money's in either fund. At this point, it was talking about either the transient guest tax fund or the surplus fund, which we no longer have. But money in either fund shall be expended for those purposes, as established, as the city commission determines will promote, enhance, maintain, or improve tourism, visitor, or convention business of the city. Based on that definition, staff believes that the changes that were proposed by the work group do fall within the acceptable category of ordinance 30 expenses. There's another question about the Carnegie Building and who is assisting with the staffing of that. And the park staff has said that there is a, a relationship between them and Explore Lawrence, where from time to time, they'll be the ones that are there to open the building. But that, there will always be either park staff or Explore Lawrence staff available for any, any reservation anytime the building's open. So really, the, if Explore Lawrence is helping, it's really just to open the building for the public. It's not for a specific engagement. When the Douglas County gave their presentation, there was a question about the jail rate. At that time, the county administrator had opined that she thought that the jail rate was prorated, and she later sent us an email to state that, that that wasn't correct, that we're actually charged the daily rate per inmate per day, regardless of whether they're there an hour or two or for the whole day. So we just wanted to make sure that we updated you with that information. And there was also a question, a few questions actually, but the next question is about Fire Station 6, as it's contemplated in the capital plan. There's obviously an operating impact, should the city decide that another fire station is needed. And fire personnel have determined that 21 full-time equivalent would be necessary to staff that facility, and that those operating costs would be roughly $2.5 million in today's dollars. So if we don't do this for four or five years, obviously, we'd have to have escalators in there, but that would be the estimate were the city to open a fire station today, that it would cost, it would take 21 people, and the cost would be roughly 2.5 million.
So that's the total cost, not just the city's cost?
That'd be the operating cost of the facility, right?
And that, so that would be a city cost, though? Because the county and city...
Right. The, the county would, and I don't have those numbers in front of me, the, the county would pay a portion of that based on the current agreement, but it would just be the, the EMS cost associated with that building. It's around 25 percent, a little over 25 percent, I believe.
Thank you.
So the cost of adding Fire Station number six would be the construction, buying the equipment, and operating, and this is the operating?
This is the operating.
It's not the equipment or the construction?
Correct. The equipment and construction is in the CIP. Excuse me. A question was brought up about if our new utility billing system could round up or provide the opportunity for a customer to round up their bills, should they so choose. We do believe that the software has that capability. We still need to test that functionality. One thing I'm a little concerned about is, we do have a lockbox for any customer that chooses to write a check and mail it in, and we're not certain that the lockbox would know what to do with that roundup provision. We're afraid that they would call it an overpayment and send it back to the customer. So as we continue to work through this, you know, we'll get those answers before we bring back any recommendations for your all's consideration. I believe the last item is rent. Let me make sure of that. I think that's right. Yep, the last item is the rent. After some of the comments that were made publicly at the last meeting, staff did meet with the Art Center, and they had indicated that they would include rent in their future audits. However, at the last meeting, it was asked that a, a letter be drafted that the mayor could sign on behalf of the city, and so that is the first item on the agenda for your consideration. That's item 2A, I believe, mayor, if you want to take that up.
Yes.
Are we wanting to tackle them one by one?
Yeah, that's what I wanted to do.
That would be preferred, I think.
Yep. So any questions for Jeremy on this?
Thanks for the follow-ups.
Okay. Then we'll open this part two, public comment. That would be the Art Center letter, adding language to their audit. Any public comment on this item? Okay, we'll bring it back up here. Anything?
Pretty straightforward. I, I would make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign a letter to the Art Center regarding their annual financial audit.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Herbert, a second by Commissioner Bowley. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. We're on to item 2B, which is to conduct a public hearing for the 2019 City of Lawrence amended budget.
Correct. We've talked about this a few times, so I won't go into great detail, but essentially, the funds listed are the ones that need to be amended. That amount was in the staff report, and I think at this time, it'd be appropriate to open the public hearing and then continue on.
I move we open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sod, and a second by Commissioner Nanda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. The public hearing is now opened. Do we have any comments on this, questions? Okay. We got...
Just to clarify, is this the part that includes the water cost increase, or is that further on?
No, this is, this, that'll be further down.
Okay, never mind.
This is just the 2019 adjustments. Okay.
Maybe we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bowley, second by Commissioner Nanda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
I move we, do we go ahead and do the motion?
Yep.
Okay. You're coming up to the podium, so I thought I'd better...
I just wanted to be able to answer any questions if you had any.
I move we adopt on first reading ordinance number 9706.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sod, and a second by Commissioner Herbert. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, we're on to item 2C.
Now I'll turn it over to Mike Lawless, who will walk through the stormwater rates.
Good evening. Mike Lawless, deputy director for MSO. And we'll start with the presentation on the stormwater rates. So we'll start out with just a little bit of a summary. We're proposing a 3% rate increase, which amounts to 13 cents per equivalent residential unit per month. We expect it to generate about $99,000. And we are in the process of putting together a rate model that will look at cost of service, how, so that we have a better idea of how to budget all of the items and capital projects that are needed. We are in the process, I, I guess I would be remiss if I didn't go into a little bit of our asset collection. So we're in the process of the video and asset identification, condition assessment, and that's all part of what we will need to, to be able to, to look at the, the assets and the projects that we need to do, whether it be for capacity or based on condition. And those will all be folded into that rate model. It's not something that's going to happen in the first year or even the second year, but as we get that information, that will all be folded into the model as we look at that on an annual basis. So just to reiterate, that 13 cent per ERU would come to $1.56 per year as an additional amount on a, on a, a single ERU, which is 23,000, I'm sorry, 2,366 square feet of impervious surface. And then there's just a little bit of history of where we've been with the, the ERU rate over time. And then here's how the monthly increase of that ERU figures from the 437 that it is this year, and that would go to 450 per month. And then this is how we compare to the surrounding areas. The ones that have the asterisk by them are their proposed 2020 rates. The others are current rates. Any questions on...
Any, any questions for Mike? Okay.
So the, the next action item would be to adopt on first reading the rate ordinance for 2020 on the stormwater.
Okay. So we'll, if there's no questions for staff, we'll open it up to, I guess we have a public hearing.
I move we open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bowley, second by Commissioner Herbert.
Do we need?
We just don't need it.
Don't, just pub, public hearing? Okay. Okay, great. Forget it.
So we don't need it for this?
Ctrl-Z.
Okay.
You need to, you need to take public comment.
Right, public comment.
Right, so that's, okay, that's, that's, okay. Public comment on this item. Any public comment? Okay. Bring it back up here?
I guess I can move and close the public hearing.
Anything else? Any ideas, any thoughts on this?
We need to work on this issue, for sure. We need resources to do it.
We do. We definitely need resources to do it. You know, I sent a few questions to staff today and hope to continue the discussion with them about continuing to fund the 1996 Stormwater Management Report or, or master plan. And, you know, my, I've expressed my concerns again about the lack of progress, what I consider to be the lack of progress on that. And we're getting into a new phase of this, and obviously, we need the funding to support that. The, the, so the need to address these new potential projects, are we, what's, how's that going to impact addressing those from the 1996 report?
Well, I think we'll look at, as we get the information on the assets and capacity, we'll do a priority of how does the new information that we're gathering that we didn't have at the time of the 1996 master plan, how does it all fit together? So that we're addressing the highest priorities that we have identified with the funding that's available. And, and we'll have to make adjustments in that as we see the funding that's available and the, and the other projects that are identified. That may cause us to have to shift or adjust priority and where projects fit in the, in the funding that's there.
Okay. I noticed on there that you had some funding for curb maintenance and replacement.
That's correct.
So how much of, how much do you allocate? Is it a percentage of the fund, or is it just a project by project, or?
Well, for the street maintenance program, we've identified $140,000 for that project, and that allows us to do some curb. A lot of it would be inlet throats, so where, when you actually get to the curb inlet, a lot of those throats are broken in. If you drive around, sometimes you'll see orange cones that are right in the throat of that inlet. It's because that, that concrete at the inlet has sunken in, and, and it doesn't allow the water to get into the inlet itself. Some of it's running down in and undermining that curb. And so stormwater funding, or the, the stormwater funds are appropriate for that kind of repairs.
Okay. So you're talking just the inlets? You're not talking about whole street curbs?
Well, we could use it for some street curb, because the, the, the actual curb and gutter is what directs the stormwater to the inlet, to the collection system. And so, you know, in the overall street maintenance program, my guess is that the, the $140,000 doesn't cover all of the, the curb and gutter and stormwater work that we're doing on that project.
Okay. So going forward with this new money that we're getting for, for the items that we're looking at under the video, video inspect, inspection program, how can we be sure that we're not going to run into a situation where we don't do anything for 10 years on these projects?
I think that's, that was part of the reason why we went to the, the combined MSO department, so that we can take some of the programs and projects that we put in place on the sewer and water side, and basically start to look at the other parts of the system in a very similar fashion. If you look at the, the capital budget for next year, there's half a million dollars identified for lining and other things that we would find during the video inspection program. You know, we've already found collapsed storm sewers as part of the, the, the work that we've already done. We've made repairs at Sixth and Arizona, over at Mass and Pawnee. We've identified a number of inlets that are on our list that have the cones or the, the inlet depression or concrete that's failed there, that are on our list that we currently don't have enough funding to do. So next year, that, that half a million dollars that we've identified for lining and video detection will go for that. We've also identified another half a million for in-house stormwater repair. That will go a long way to, to working down our list of, of inlets that have issues and known deficiencies or pipe areas that we already know, and, and I'm sure we'll find more as we identify those assets.
So how many of those projects on the 1996 report are being, are slated to be completed in the next five years of our CIP?
I'm sorry, I don't have that information on the, on the tip of my tongue. I know that next year, the Alabama project was on that plan, and then if we look in 2022, I believe there's another 2.5 million. And then I think in 2022, there's another, but I, I'm sorry, I don't have the exact projects for those.
Okay.
But those will address either projects from the master plan of 1996, or anything that would be prioritized... or anything that would be prioritized through the video and/or asset identification process that we're currently going through.
Okay, thanks Mike, I appreciate that. One more question. Some, one of the items I've been concerned about is how the, the stormwater projects that are funded in, as well as salary expenditures that are actually representative of the time that staff spends on stormwater projects. Looking at history, I've had questions about how staffing has been allocated out of this fund that, that it seemed a little bit implausible that they were actually doing stormwater stuff the entire time. So what are, what are we having placed to, to address that?
Well, again, I think as part of the merger, as we put together the, the list of all personnel, we looked at how were they allocated and what funds were they allocated to? And, and I think we've made some adjustments with the merger process. And then as we, we as staff, as we look through how the, the, the stormwater fund works, how the personnel work, what they're working on, we'll continually evaluate where are those people paid from, what fund are they from? And, and if we find that we need to make changes as we go forward and as we learn more about what the staff does, then we'll, we'll make those recommendations.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you. Any other questions? Thanks Mike. Okay, we are, I guess that's.
I think, um, do we need to adopt on?
I'm ready for the motion.
Yeah, we're ready for the motion.
Ordinance nine seven zero four.
We did public comment.
Okay, I think you have a motion for that.
Sorry, Betsy.
Do you have a second?
I second that.
Motion by Commissioner Herbert, a second by Commissioner Nonda, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you Mike, appreciate your.
Will you get me one more time? I'm going to be here for the solid waste rates. It's a, very similar to what we talked, just talked about on the stormwater side. We're proposing a three percent increase for solid waste rates. We anticipate this will generate an additional four hundred and fourteen thousand dollars in 2020. And just like the stormwater fund, we're looking at a, a formal rate model that will take a look at where are those costs and how do we allocate those to the right users of the, of the solid waste system so that, that we're looking at an actual cost of service for what we provide. So that three percent increase is fifty-six percent, I'm sorry, fifty-six cents per household per month, which is an increase of about six dollars and seventy-two cents per year. You can see the monthly rates, what they will be with that increase for residential, the additional carts, where we're at with the, the low-income elderly and commercial. And then that's the minimum, and then it would go up very, based on the amount and the number of collections that we have. Same thing with dumpster and roll-off rates, they vary by size and frequency of, of the collection. For residential trash and recycling services, you can see how we're going up fifty-six cents. It goes from eighteen eighty to nineteen thirty-six. And then we have kind of a comparison of the surrounding trash and recycling services in the area. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
So this is an enterprise fund, right?
It is.
So the costs are supposed to be borne by the revenues that go into this fund? There's not supposed to be any other support for this?
Right. The rates that we impose will be to support the services that are provided. And that's what the, the, the rate model will look at is how are those costs? Where are they coming from? And are we recouping those costs from the customers that, that cause those services?
Well, I look forward to that rate model.
Are all of the communities that we're comparing to offering both trash and recycling services?
I, yes, they are. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you Mike. Now we'll open this up for public comment. Any public, here we go. Hi, Marcy.
Good evening, Marcy Francisco, eleven oh one Ohio. Some years ago, the waste rates were changed so that if you had four kitchens, you could get a dumpster in your alley, and that was equivalent to the cost. So the city was sort of surprised that more people signed up for that proposal. And I'm wondering if it still is, we're taking that into consideration and it's still more affordable to have a dumpster than for individual trash collection rates? Don't know, but I'll be looking into that.
So like four households in a block would have just a dumpster versus separate carts?
And in, in this case, it's apartment units.
Oh, okay.
So if you have a duplex or a fourplex, a Long Ohio Street property owners could sign up. And it was cheaper to have four units with solid waste collection by using a dumpster than four. But I think that's an important thing to keep in mind as we look at these rates, and I hope that we continue to do that.
Okay, thank you. We'll, we'll have staff address that in just a minute, okay?
Thank you.
Any other public comment on this?
Dan Dennenberg, two seven oh two University Drive. I had a neighbor a while back who did not recycle anything. Everything she had went in the trash cart, the green trash cart. And I don't know how often that happens, but it's something maybe that needs to be considered. According to the housing market analysis, I think from last year, something like twenty thousand KU students inhabit the neighborhoods. Now, true that the owners of the properties they live in probably pay something for refuse collection, but I think given the number and the fact that probably most wildlife do better at recycling materials than the average college student, the KU should participate through a community impact payment. And part of that payment would be used to offset the solid waste. And I think maybe something should be considered to tho, about those who don't recycle because that can, that, that causes a problem. I, I, I would see this woman's trash and every once in a while, and I would notice very readily that a lot of articles she put in the trash were in fact recyclable. And I think there are some other considerations that need to be thrown in here.
Thank you, Dan.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Ted Boyle, North Lawrence Improvement. I'd just like to say that the sanitation crew, the yard race crew, and the recyclable crew, they all do a great job of picking up those units and don't leave anything behind on the ground. Now, here last year in our neighborhood cleanup, we had a little friction between sanitation and the neighborhood about picking up items on our cleanup day. And they would only allow us to fill the bins that we have, that the city issues. And anything else, they would not pick up. So we talked about it and we rented a roll-off. We thought, okay, we'll put a roll-off down in a church parking lot where we bring the tree debris and limbs, and it worked out really good. I mean, it, the residents came down there and sanitation didn't have to pick up overflowed containers and all of that. People brought it down and stuffed it in the roll-off. Now, the roll-off, the one we got, I believe wasn't the smallest one, it was the next one, and not with the high sides. I mean, you can get them with ten-foot sides, but it's kind of difficult to get stuff in. Anyway, we filled that roll-off. And, but the negative part of that is the expense. The expense of that roll-off to the neighborhood was a little bit on the high side. And this was something our neighborhood cleanup that we've been doing twenty-three years since I've been President of North Lawrence Improvement. And so this is the first time we'd used a roll-off. And our thinking was, one, it made it more accessible to the residents and they could put everything in there, large objects, you know, and lumber and everything, except chemicals and that normal stuff. And so our theory was, it was not only helping the residents, but it was all, also helping the sanitation guys on dealing with what's pushed out to the curb. So if we could do something about reducing the cost of a roll-off to the neighborhoods on their cleanup day, we do it two times a year. We got one coming up here in October. We do it two times, and it's well participated. So anyway, that's the only problem I see is the cost of that roll-off to the neighborhoods twice a year. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Any other public comment on this item? Okay, bring it back up to the commission. Mike, could you address the issues with dumpsters?
Um, sure. I'm not, I don't have a lot of experience on the sanitation side. I'm probably going to have to check into that and, and get back to you. I think it's something that we will take a look at as, as part of the, the rate model that we're putting together. But I would say that, you know, all of that has to be factored into our cost of service is, there is a cost to go out, and whether it's at the curb side as a, as bulk items to pick up or whether it's in a dumpster, there's a cost to that. And those will be things that we look at as we, as we work through that rate model process. Whether or not there's a, a case to be made for a neighborhood cleanup and, and the, the trade-offs of picking up each individual versus a, a single location or a dumpster, I think those are all discussions that we can have during that, that rate model process.
Okay, thank you. Thanks Mike, appreciate it. Any comments on this or?
I was thinking that we could maybe offer something to the low mod neighborhoods, but it turns out that wouldn't help Ted at all, so maybe we need to expand it a little bit. But we could talk about that in the rate model.
Possibly that. Thanks Mike.
If, if you have no other questions, then we would do the same for adopting the first reading of ordinance for the 2020 solid rate, solid waste rates.
I would move, we adopt ordinance nine seven zero five. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Herbert, a second by Commissioner Bowley, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, passes unanimously.
Before we get to the water and wastewater rates, a couple articles were in the paper about the recommended budget, and I think we'd be remiss if we didn't try to provide some context and a little bit of more information for your consideration. The first thing I'd like.
Hold on, we're on two E. Parking.
It's parking next.
Yeah.
That's why we come back to it.
There's no formal action being requested related to the water and wastewater rates. What we wanted to do was provide an update in the context of municipal utilities.
And so it's included in the presentation even though there's no action before you tonight?
Thanks for that clarification. So this is just a staff report on water and wastewater.
Is that, is that okay to do that since it's not on the agenda?
Yeah. It does seem very strange, to be honest with you.
Well, it was, it was on the agenda in terms of the overall presentation.
It's in the PowerPoint that was posted.
There's just no action item on it.
Okay. I think that, yeah. Is that okay, Sherri, to?
I mean, it's, it is part of the budget discussion, and it was, the materials were included on the agenda. But since there's not an action, there isn't a separate action listed.
We could have a staff report and public comment, right?
Yeah.
Is it really part of G?
I was going to say, that was my thought, was that that should come before two G. You know, let's get through E and F.
Okay.
Since this information is totally unrelated to E or F.
Yeah.
If we could do that, that would just help, help, help us out, okay?
Is it okay to come back to that? Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, my name is Brad Harrell, I'm the Parking Control Supervisor. In 2017, the City of Lawrence approved a ten-year parking operations and development plan that was completed by Desmond Design Management. This study included an in-depth analysis of all the downtown public parking. The study offered a series of recommendations, several of which included rate increases. I will be presenting those to you this evening. The recommendations include meter rates, garage rates, permit and citation rates, and staff has recommended an effective date of October first of this year. As for the recommended meter rates, for a short-term two-hour meters, the current rate is fifty cents an hour. That rate was enacted in the year 2009, and the recommended rate is a dollar an hour. As for the long-term meters, the five and ten-hour, the current rate is ten cents an hour, enacted in the year 2001, and a recommended rate of twenty cents per hour. As for the recommended garage rates, the Riverfront, New Hampshire and Vermont Garage, the current rate is a dollar a day. Those rates were enacted the year in which each garage was built. The recommended rate is two dollars per day. As for our recommended permits and citation rates, meter and off-street citations are currently five dollars per citation. The year those were enacted is 2016, and the recommended rate is ten dollars per citation. As for our ten-hour permits, they are currently a hundred and ninety-two dollars a year, enacted in the year 2000, and recommended rate is two hundred and forty dollars annually. The above-mentioned rate increases will allow for the implementation of new parking technology. Of these new, of these new advancements, the parking priority list is as follows. Smart enforcement handhelds and printers, multi-space pay-by-plate kiosk stations for off-street parking garages and facilities, license plate recognition or LPR software, online permit and payment portal, and a downtown mobile payment app for all downtown public parking. For the implementation timeline, the recommendation includes an effective date of October first of 2019. What this will do is provide a revenue stream ahead of the issuance of debt for improvements and allow for key improvements to be made in a timely manner. Basically just allow us to really hit the ground running in 2020 with our, with our improvements. And with that, recommend to adopt on the first reading ordinance number nine six six two pertaining to parking and parking meters within the City of Lawrence. Can I answer any questions?
Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. We will now open it up for public comment. Any public comment on this item?
Hi, Harrison Baker, twenty-six oh three Compton Square, apartment C three oh two. I have two major concerns. One has to do with the fact that again, we're issuing something on debt. The city tends to have an interesting relationship with issuing debt bonds to improve itself. If we're going to create revenue in the future, we should not be taking on debt to build things. It is just an opinion of my own, and perhaps shared by many people in Lawrence as well. But it is concerning that every single project that seems to come across the city commission's desk is always backed by debt instead of building revenue and paying it in installments or paying it outright. The second major concern, other than the fact that all these costs are basically doubling, is that if you're going to start upgrading the types of the kiosks and having a mobile app, you need to also have smart stations for individuals who do not have cell phones that are capable of having a mobile app, but also do not carry cash. I don't, I rarely carry cash, and right now my coin jar in my car is literally all pennies, I don't, I rarely carry cash and right now my coin jar in my car is literally all pennies, which is useless, especially when I try to park downtown. If I had a card able, if I had the ability to pay by card, I could pay by card. And for those individuals who don't have smartphones or phones that are going to be advanced enough for an app download, there are those stations like that are in the parking garages that you can just pay via your card and not have to worry about downloading another app as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Hi, I'm Chris Flowers. And my, my question is if we're raising parking rates to pay for the new equipment, will the rates go back down once the equipment, like the new, all the new parking equipment stuff's been paid for? Thank you.
Okay, any other public comment?
Hi, I'm Sally Zagry, Executive Director of Downtown Lawrence, Inc., our downtown business association. And I want to say I've spoken several times with Brad Harrell and also Brendan McGuire about these proposed changes. And what I would like us to consider very strongly and to plan is a multifaceted campaign to explain parking downtown to visitors and also to residents. We have a lot of parking. We have a lot of free parking. And I'm, I'm fairly confident that there will be some upset and some, many comments if the proposed changes go through. But I feel like we are lacking in terms of explaining all of the ways and places that we can park. And that, I'm, DLI is very, very happy to help with that effort. We've been wanting to do that. We've just got some new signage that has been put in place. And I just want to ask that that be a priority in education. Thank you.
Thank you, Sally. Any other public comment?
Quick, as, as for the communication-
Let me, let me-
Okay, I'm sorry.
We're still on public comment. Any other public comment? Okay, come on up, Ray.
As far as the communication goes, I want to let everyone know that I have been speaking with Porter about a comprehensive communication effort out to the community. That includes DLI, residents and everyone in the downtown that'll be affected by this change. And of course, just to, you know, let employees know downtown what their parking options are in their quadrant of which area they are in downtown, so.
So you'll be working with the DLI group to-
Yes, ma'am.
To, as part of that education process?
Absolutely.
Thank you, thank you.
Let me just ask Brad to confirm that this, the parking fund is an enterprise fund. And so the income and expenses for this fund are supposed to be pretty much exclusively devoted to this parking issue.
That is correct.
Right, and I appreciate that.
So do you foresee these smart stations that the gentleman was speaking about, is that gonna be part of the long-range plan?
You know, we're gonna have to reabout, as we start to implement this new technology, we're gonna get a, you know, a lot of new data that's gonna come in, the adoption rate for our mobile app and payments. So we're gonna, you know, reach all those avenues and figure out what is, what is working best for, for downtown Lawrence. And this new, this new equipment really allows us to do that.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Yep.
Anything else?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a quick comment. I, you know, certainly received correspondence both privately and then publicly with comment as well about raising, you know, raising meter rates, but I, and, and talk about how it's doubling. But I think it is important and I'm glad your presentation highlights the date of the last change. I mean, the Riverfront Garage, that rate was set when I was in second grade and it remains that way today. Down, downtown lot meters were set at 10 cents an hour when I bought my first car. And it remains at 10 cents an hour today. I mean, we are, to say that we've held off raising rates would be a bit of an understatement. So I just think that that's important that we highlight that.
Any other comments or concerns? Okay, done a motion?
Yes, I would make the motion to adopt on first reading ordinance 9662.
Have a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Herbert, a second by Commissioner Bowley. All in favor? Aye opposed. Passes unanimously. I think I would like to take a break, about a 10-minute break, please.
Sure, if you may.
Okay, we're back at it. Not sure, we lost a commissioner. Not sure where she went. I'm sure she's on her way. Technical issues, okay. Well, we'll go ahead and get started with 2F.
Yep, there she is, hold on.
All right, here she comes. Here she comes.
Sorry, I have to talk to IT.
Okay. So we're considering adopting on first reading ordinance pertaining to the salary of the members of the governing body.
I don't know that I have much to add. Through the discussions of the budget process, the salary was determined to be $22,044. So that's what's been put in the ordinance. And if we have to answer any questions you may have?
Any questions for Jeremy? Okay, thank you, Jeremy. We will open it up for public comment.
Ted Boyle, President, North Lawrence Improvement. You know, I remember when they raised the commission pay from $6,000. So that's how long I've been doing this. And, you know, at the time, they discussed running it up to, I think, $15,000 at that time. And commissioners more or less voted to nine for the commissioners and 10 for the mayor. And that's what it is today. And I believe that was probably close to 20 years ago. And so as much as I come up there and, and as much crap as I give you guys, you know, you gotta get compensated for it. So personally, I think the $22,000 is a bargain for the neighborhood, for the city. So, but that don't mean I'll slack up on you.
I would be disappointed if you did.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. My name's K.T. Wells, speaking only for myself. I am adamantly in support of this. So many of us have wanted the commissioners to get paid more for so many years. And I was thinking about it this week and thinking, it isn't so much about the individuals who are elected and are here right now. It's about the job and it's showing respect for the job and for the people who will do it when you're gone. This isn't enough. You get stopped in the grocery store, you get stopped, you get called, you get emails, you get texts. I know it's not part-time work and you have day jobs and kids. This is a start and I hope you vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this item? Okay, we'll bring it back up here. Any comments from the commission? Okay.
I move we adopt on first reading ordinance number 9708. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sodan, a second by Commissioner Nanda. All in favor? Aye opposed?
Nay.
Passes four to one. Okay, now we're gonna talk about the water and wastewater.
Thank you. Before we get into the water and wastewater rates, as I indicated, there were some articles written. And we just thought it'd be appropriate to remind people of the comments that have been made publicly, the different times we've talked about this throughout the budget process, and hopefully provide a little context that might be helpful to the discussion. So this first slide is a slide that we originally showed back in June during the city manager's recommended budget. At that time, we discussed that the transfers from the Water and Wastewater Fund were primarily for two purposes. The first purpose is the Internal Service Fund that's going to capture costs of human resources, information technology, finance administration, and risk management. And the second was to formalize a process for determining how much money the utility was assisting the general fund in for right-of-way maintenance. And the methodology that was recommended by staff was what's known as a payment in lieu of tax. Obviously, governments can't tax themselves, so it's not an actual franchise fee. Were it an actual franchise fee, it would show up at the bottom of the bill, just like it does on your natural gas bill, your electric bill, your phone bill, et cetera. That's not what we're recommending. That's not what we've reported in any way, shape, or form. What we've talked about all along was simply that from the revenues that are currently generated by the fund, that we would capture 6%. And that's what would be moved to the general fund for right-of-way. The other thing that the article alluded to is that this is somehow a new endeavor. And as we reported in our budget document, it's been reported in every CAFER, but it's just not true. It's been occurring for a really long time. The city did pass a transfer policy back in 2012, and our current practices align with that transfer policy. This is a little small, I apologize, but what we wanted to show was a graph that charted the revenue from 2010 to what we're projecting for the 2020 budget. And then what those transfers are and where they go. And so, the dark blue line is what the 6% pilot would represent. The light blue area just above that would be any other funds that were transferred to the general fund. And then the gray bar, which may be kinda hard to see, I apologize, but the gray bar then would be transfers from the operating fund to the non-bonded capital fund. So, in essence, just moving money from one pocket to another, if you will, within the utility to set aside funds for future capital projects. And the percentages weren't precise every year, but the, on average, from 2010 to 2011, the city transferred anywhere between 10% to 11% of revenues from the utility fund to the general fund. From 2012 to 15, the city transferred anywhere between 8% and 9%. In 2016 and 17, it was 7%, and since 2018, it's been 6%. So, staff believes that the budget that was recommended by the city manager is consistent with the policy that's been in place for multiple years. And all we really wanted to do was sort of formalize that so that we would know predictability for future revenue growth of not only the utility fund, but the general fund. And that we'd also have future constraints on the general fund so as to not presume that there would be, you know, exorbitant growth of utility revenues to offset general fund costs. So, I really think it's important to make sure that everyone understands it's not new, it's not an add-on tax. It's monies that have been transferred all along. We've simply codified it for purposes of the budget document as a payment in lieu of a tax equivalent to what a franchise fee would be were we to initiate one. And it's a transfer from the water utility to the general fund, and it's occurred at least since 2010. I'm fairly certain it's occurred beyond that, but that was the presentation we made for tonight. The second thing I'd like to-
Before you go from that slide, if I could just ask you a couple of questions.
Sure.
So, you alluded to the newspaper's article, and, you know, I thought that was kind of a creative presentation that they did. And as a retired IRS agent, I can tell you, I've seen a lot of creative presentations over the years. And lots of times, there's a kernel of truth in them. And I think that there was some in the newspaper article. But what I'd like to take you back to is year by year, you know, if this is gonna be considered a tax, what was the rate of the tax in 2010? What was the rate of the tax in 2011? Because I think that's a really important factor, and you mentioned it, but I'd like to highlight that. I mean, if, you know, it was what, 11% or 12% in 2010?
It ranged between 10% to 11%.
Okay, but what I'm saying is you could compute from the information what that rate was in each of these years, right? So, my ask of you is, you know, I'd like to see those figures computed.
Yeah, I'll get that.
Because I think that that really, you know, addresses what the newspaper was referring to.
This isn't an actionable item, so I don't know to what degree you want discussion. But this, to me, highlights yet again a very specific issue where we need to have a stronger communication presence. We are enabling other people to tell our narrative. There are three dozen people in this room, a third of which work for the city of Lawrence, and 17 people at home watching this meeting. And no one else is gonna hear this story. But 12,000 people are gonna read an article that's gonna talk about how we're taxing them to death, which is blatantly inaccurate. It's an inaccurate representation of what is happening. We have to have a better communication strategy to tell the story from the city's perspective.
Well, I would just like to add that this transfer money, or this transfer, actually, I know Commissioner Bull and I have been talking about this for a couple of years. And I know I talked to Chad on the phone, and I had a hard time deciphering exactly what he was trying to do. But, so this transfer, we've been discussing with management for a couple of years. And the idea behind it, or for us, anyway, for me, was that we were working to make it more transparent, because I didn't think that it was being presented that way. And so, I think this is kind of that next step of trying to do that, to trying to show the transparency of what this transfer is actually all about. And I really like the step that you're taking to bring that up to, you know, bring it to the forefront more so our residents do know what we're doing. And they should. It's been going on for a long time. This is our policy. We actually have a written policy on this, which I think is really important. And if you'll, once we get the numbers from you, you're gonna see that percentage has actually dropped over the years to 6% now. So, I'm, you know, I appreciate what you're doing with it, and I guess that's all I gotta say.
Okay, well, I mean, I just wanted to have that slide referred to as I made my comments, so.
Yeah, go ahead.
Moving on, the second article was about the cash that's available for the water and wastewater utility. And I wanna take a few minutes here just to sort of explain, I think possibly, where the confusion came from. The, in the city's budget, we have a fund called the Water-Wastewater Utility Fund. And then we have a non-bonded construction fund, and then an unbudgeted but used bonded construction fund. In the audit, all three of those are consolidated to one. So, from generally accepted accounting principles' perspective, we have one operating fund that covers operations, capital, maintenance, depreciation, debt service, et cetera. It's all in one line item. And so, I believe back in 2019- Hopefully, this will work. Back in 2019 budget, in a way to illustrate that bond funds were issued in '17, it was shown in Fund 501, which is the operating fund. Proceeds from bonds, 17.1 million. Unfortunately, what wasn't shown was a transfer out of this fund to the actual bond fund. And so, the cash shows up here, and as you can see, that cash rolled all the way through to the 2019 adopted budget. And so, those are the projections that were used to start the 2020 budget process. As I mentioned during my comments in the audit, we had discovered while we were reconciling cash for the audit, that the cash had been called unrestricted in Fund 501 when it should have been restricted in 551. And so, what we're going to have in the adopted 2020 budget is an amended summary. And I've attached that here for you all so that you can see it. Sorry, I forgot what that is. So, essentially, the document changes quite a bit because they're no longer unaudited figures. We're now using the audited figures. The revenue is up higher than what was in the unaudited figures because of the accruals that were mentioned by RSM earlier. The expenses are down slightly because of the way debt is treated in enterprise funds, different than governmental funds. But the beginning fund balance is really the big difference. If you go back to the city's recommended budget, let's see if I can get this pulled up here, because it's very important, I think, for people to understand. Well, I've made all kinds of chicken scratches. Unfortunately, so, it's on page 70. The original beginning balance was 46.9 million, and that included that bond cash that had not been spent. And so, the presentation has a misstatement. But what I think is important is, for purposes of rate, for purposes of how we decide how much money the utility needs to operate, cash is sort of all considered at the same time. So, whether we need funds to operate the utility, or whether we need funds for capital maintenance in the facility, all the cash is thrown into the model. And then the model rates out over the years what we need to increase revenues to keep up with the capital project demand. So, it was misstated in the document. There's no denying that. But that misstatement, I don't believe can be conferred, or I don't think a conclusion can be made that that's just free cash available for no reason. That was cash that the city actually borrowed back in 2017 for specific purposes that were outlined in the 2017 CIP. And so, those projects, as they're being spent, those dollars go down. They never should have actually been in Fund 501. If the city was gonna present it this way, I would have recommended that they also showed the transfer out so that you could see the money flowing through the fund if that was the concern. But unfortunately, I didn't catch that in the time I was putting the budget together, that that cash was not classified properly. And that's why I'm bringing it to you tonight, so that you can see, from an operating standpoint, cash beginning in the 2019 year is not the 32.2 million that we had anticipated when the budget was written. It's 25.4 million, and that difference is that bond cash. And why that's significant, I know this number still looks very high to you, to the public. And so, we put this slide together so that you could hopefully understand that the utility fund relies heavily on debt. Those debt covenants require that a certain amount of funds be held back in reserve. And so, that dotted line that you see on this chart is that reserve that's required. It's, I'm calling it a target, because we're a little over the requirement to make sure that we don't run into a gap issue. And then the dashed line is actually where fund balance is. So, while fund balance appears high, it's actually right in line with what we told the bondholders that issued the debt to us we would keep in reserve for them, if that makes sense. And so, when we look at a fund balance projection policy for this fund and any other fund that's issuing revenue bonds, that's one thing we have to keep in mind, is that those bond covenants require a debt service reserve. And so, that will, that will make the fund appear like it's got a lot of cash for other purposes. But we've actually told the bondholders, and tell them every year, we're holding this money for you should, you know, a catastrophe happen. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. I don't wanna monopolize the conversation. But I really think it's important, you know, obviously, a mistake was made. I don't believe that that mistake does anything other than represent where the cash is on the balance sheet. It doesn't impact the rate model, as you'll see when the rates are presented later this year. And it doesn't, it doesn't produce what some people are calling a windfall.
So, is the use of the bonded money restricted to projects by the bond language?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, at the time, the revenue bonds are issued, a list of projects are outlined. Those projects are then told to the bondholders at the time of the bond sale. And so, when they're, essentially, when they're selling you the bond, they're being told this is how it's going to be spent. And so, the accounting back to the bondholders is based on that project level. And should-
But we did make a mistake.
We made a mistake in the presentation of cash.
Right, yeah, okay.
But we continued to follow the policy on our transfers out.
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any questions for Jeremy?
What percentage of that is fund balance required to be?
The debt service reserve requires 125% of the debt service payment. So, if you look at the debt service line here, there was 125% of that number. So, we're around 24 million, I think, is what the debt service reserve will be for 2020. And so, we're just slightly above that.
Anything else?
I'd be curious, was that information relayed in the form of an interview at any point?
Well, to be honest, we had a discussion with Chad that was predominantly about the pilot. And at one point during that interview, he had asked about cash, and we had indicated that we'd get back with him. But that was, unfortunately, the article came out before we could get back to him, so no, it hasn't been relayed, but it will be.
Okay, thank you, Jeremy.
I appreciate you taking the time to kind of explain this and have a conversation about it, also owning kind of where that came from. And I appreciate that, you know, you're coming in with fresh eyes, and I'm looking forward to continuing to improve the processes that we use and that accountability. So, thank you.
Thank you. Now, I'm gonna turn it back over to Mike, who's gonna talk-
Let me make a couple more comments real quick. I just wanted to say, I echo Jennifer's comments, and, you know, I'd like to point out that this is one of the benefits from having a rotation in our auditors. You and I visited about that earlier. I mean, your plan is to rotate audit firms every three to five years, and that's kind of a good thing when you're, you know, trying to deal with issues like this. And the other question I have for you is, if we chose to keep the amount constant of the pilot, it would, the percentage would go down over time as revenues go up?
Yes.
So, you know, rather than essentially increasing the reliance in the general fund on this, we could essentially keep it flat and maybe, over time, decrease it in order to lower that rate. Which I think is an important point that the article made, that if we put it at 6%, it's gonna go up as revenues go up. But for, you know, 10 years, it's been pretty much constant, so we haven't expanded the reliance in the general fund on that. And I'm a little reluctant to increase that reliance. So, the way to do that would be to decrease the percentage. Is that accurate?
Yep.
Okay, great.
And that would just be keeping it flat like it has been?
Yeah, if the direction from the city commission, as we go through the budget each year, was to keep it flat, then we would reduce the percentage to make it equivalent to the prior year.
Anything else? Thanks, Jeremy. Appreciate it.
I'll turn it over to Mike now.
All right, I'm back again. So, just to provide a little bit of summary on the water-wastewater rates, as we kind of discussed tonight, we're still making sure, we don't wanna go into the rate model process until we're sure of the numbers that we're providing into the model. And now that we've gone through this process, I think we're getting close to the numbers that we need to start those beginning balances for cash, for the bonded fund, and the cash construction fund. Because that's what, that's where the model starts from. And so, as we move forward, oops, that may have gone too, sorry, it went one extra. So, we're, the rate model process, or the update of the model, is underway. And now that we're getting a handle on those numbers, we'll get into that process. And it's not, it's not just to plug in a number and you get an answer. There is a process to get in and look at it, look at all the numbers, does it make sense, so that, so that we get an accurate picture of what the rates need to be. So, tonight, a little bit, I'm gonna spend a little bit of time on the individual inclining block rate that we proposed to begin in 2020. This conversation started probably over two years ago when we completed the new rate model. So, what that means is, on the residential customers, we're going to do an individual inclining block rate for each customer. And we'll, actually, I'm gonna go to the next slide. So, that individual inclining block rate is based on our winter quarter average for each customer. So, what that is, is- So what that is, is we look at the water usage in December, January, and February, um, and we average that. And we say, that is your winter quarter average water consumption. Um, and that's basically what we charge, uh, sanitary sewer charges on for the entire year, because we recognize that some people, uh, water, or have discretionary use of, of water during the summertime, that doesn't necessarily go down the sewer. So we use that winter quarter average to compute sewer for the entire year. Um, how that will play into the individual inclining block rate, um, this, uh, graphic depicts how that will work. So we've identified three blocks, um, and we use that winter quarter average. So we take the winter quarter average up to one hundred and twenty-five percent of that winter quarter average, and that would be for domestic use, and that would be our lowest block, uh, charge, the lowest rate. Um, any use above that one hundred and twenty-five percent, up to two hundred percent, would fall into block two. And we would consider that discretionary use. So that might be watering your garden, or flowers, or your yard, or whatever that might be. And so all the use in block one would be paid at block one rate. Any use above the one hundred and twenty-five percent would be paid at block two rate. And then anything above two hundred percent of the winter quarter average would fall into block three, which would be, um, for, uh, high use or excessive use, um, which is really where we get into the peaking of our water treatment system, um, for storage, pumping, treatment, uh, distribution, all of that. And it, it's, um, assets and equipment that we have to have available to us to deal with that peak that we get, um, uh, just a few days or a few weeks a year. Um, but yet we have to have and maintain that, uh, capacity, um, all year long. And so if you're one of the users that requires that capacity, then, um, that's what that block three is for. So, um, block one will have a, will be our base rate. Uh, block two would be ten percent higher, um, as a rate than block one. And block three would be fifteen percent higher than block one. And that is, um, what the new residential rate structure would be, um, when we come back to you this fall with our, um, with our rates for twenty twenty.
So the average would be citywide average residential use that you use for that winter quarter average?
No. And, and, and that's, and I guess I didn't do a very good job of explaining that, if I come back here. So it's each residential customer's, uh, winter quarter average. So, um, I have a winter quarter average that I use in December, January, February. You have one. Um, what we don't want to do is, if, if we do a collective for all residential customers, we're gonna, th, the person that uses very little water is going to be, um, impacted. And the person that, that may use a lot of water on a, on a regular basis is going to be impacted by that. So by using an individual, for each individual customer, residential customer, calculating that winter quarter average for them, then we customize that rate to them. So if I'm a single person, and, uh, I, I don't use a whole lot of water, my winter quarter average is going to be low. If I'm a family of six, um, my winter quarter average is going to be higher. And so, um, that gives each, each customer the ability to, that's why we're using those percentages. So a hundred and twenty-five percent of whatever, um, that winter quarter average is. If I use a thousand gallons, then it's a hundred and twenty-five percent of that. If I use ten thousand gallons, then it's a hundred and twenty-five percent of ten thousand.
Is there anything precluding someone knowing that that is happening, knowing that they use a lot of water, and therefore using more water during those winter months, because they would normally use it during the summer months, knowing that that's being, I mean, that, that seems like a possibility, right?
It i, it certainly is a possibility, but you have to realize that that winter quarter average is how we're going to calculate the sanitary sewer charges for the entire year. So if you wanted to do that, um, say for the wintertime, to, to maybe get a, a higher amount-
See a higher one hundred and twenty-five percent, yeah.
But then you're going to pay sanitary sewer for the entire year on that, um, on that additional quantity.
Okay. And so then, um, as, as, let's say I then use two hundred and twenty percent of my average, um, I'm just trying to make sure I understand correctly. So the up to one hundred and twenty-five percent, I would be charged the normal rate. And then the between one hundred and twenty-five percent to two hundred percent, I would be charged ten percent more. And then the above two hundred percent, I would be charged fifteen percent more. So there would be three different rates applied to my bill?
That is correct.
Okay.
And it resets every month. So it doesn't, if you, if you, once you get to the two hundred percent, it isn't that you're going to pay that amount on all bills from then on. It's every month it resets. So if, if one month it, it rains a lot, and so the, the example would be, is if, if you water your yard, um, consistently, um, one month it may be very dry, you use a lot of water, you may be, uh, uh, all the way into that, that third block. Um, and if we have a month where it rains a lot, and, and you're just using the same water you used in the wintertime, then you're going to stay in that block one. And, and it, it, it resets every month. And so each customer will pay, um, a block one rate before they pay a block two rate. They'll pay a block two rate before they pay a block three rate.
Just to be clear, I'm not trying to scam the system in the winter by you using more water. That just seemed like an interesting, kind of, piece.
There will be, I mean, and, and part of the process is, as we, as we get closer to the time, we're going to do some public education on what does that mean. Um, we've got the same graphic. Um, and if you, if you look at your water bill, in the upper right-hand side, it has a, a WQA for your winter quarter average. And it, it tells you what your, what your winter quarter average is. Um, we have a, a little tool, a calculator, where you can plug in that winter quarter average that you have, and then populate some, uh, uh, water consumption that you might, if you go back and look at your previous summer bills, you could, you could punch in, how much water did I use, eh, last July? And you see how that compares with your winter consumption, and it'll show you how much quantity and cost is associated with each of those blocks.
And I guess this might be going into too much detail, because it will be coming back to us. But-
Yes.
You know, what would happen if you moved residents, or someone else moves in who uses that quantity? It's attached by person, by billing, by address?
Well, if you're moving inside the city, then your winter, uh, quarter average would follow you to the, to the new location. Um, if you're new, then, um, we would be looking, do you have previous water bills, um, or something that would show what your consumption has been, um, a, at your previous location? Um, I'm not sure if they, if, if you're a brand-new customer in the city, is there a, an average that we use for a new customer? I, I don't know that. We can, we can get the answer to that question when we come back.
Yeah, or if you move from a, you know, one-bedroom house to a six-bedroom house, that's probably going to look different if you're growing a family. So then if you're stuck at that one hundred and twenty-five percent rate that you started with as a single person, that's going to have an impact.
The size of your house shouldn't affect your water usage, though, right?
But it does if you have more kids, or you get married, or et cetera. So I just, there are some questions that I have as we look at implementing that rate structure that probably aren't necessary for tonight, but certainly are, are questions.
Okay, yes. That's all I have.
Okay, any questions for, okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Getting to the final part of the presentation.
So we are on to item, um, two G.
Yes.
Is that what we're looking at right now?
Yep, we're going to wrap up the twenty twenty budget presentation, and then, uh, allow you time to open up the public hearing.
Okay.
Before we, uh, open up the public hearing, again, I just want to, uh, reiterate that the, uh, operating budgets that was outlined in the, uh, public hearing notice was two hundred and ninety-seven million. Um, that was all of the operating expenditures, plus the fund balance, because that's what we report to the state. But not all of the funds are included, because the state is only concerned about those, uh, statutorily required to be budgeted funds. And so we had put together that chart that's attached, that shows the difference between what we re, represented to the state, and then the document that you have, that's the actual budget. Um, based on your comments from prior meetings, we have crafted ordinance ninety-seven oh seven to be a flat mill, even though the publication indicated up to a half-mill increase, as we've discussed, uh, previously. Uh, you always have the ability to lower the mill without another public hearing, you don't have the ability to raise it. So, um, the ordinance that's pr, before you tonight, if you do nothing, would be that flat mill. What we wanted to show, uh, real quick, was just what those changes were. So, um, before I, I do that, I just, uh, again, want to reiterate that the, uh, city manager's recommended budget, that, uh, was also, um, condoned by the work group, and tacitly approved by you all previously, included a general wage adjustment for all city employees, and included, um, a market pace, uh, based pay adjustment for those, uh, affected employees as well. Uh, but some of the things that were removed, uh, from the budget was, the increase to commissioner pay had been reduced, um, by eighty thousand, and thirty thousand of that was put back into the general fund to fund the, uh, grants to the art, uh, art center. Uh, the Lawrence Community Shelter increase was reduced by a hundred and forty-four thousand. The Lawrence Chamber, BTBC, uh, were both reduced by twenty thousand. The, uh, money that was, uh, set aside to be transferred for capital projects was eliminated. The money that was set aside in the special gas tax fund to help offset the first-year cost of the Internal Service Fund was eliminated. And then thirty thousand dollars that was, uh, in the general operating budget to replace, um, trees from the Emerald Ash Bore Program was also eliminated. Um, since that time, we were, uh, notified by the county that they were not going to fund the Mobile Integrated Health Professional. Uh, that was a one-hundred percent funded by the county, so we removed those revenues and expenses, uh, from the budget. And as I indicated, we added back in those scholarships. Uh, what we wanted to do was show you the corresponding millage, so that should you decide that one or more of these, uh, are things that you would like to include, you know what that would be as an increase to the mill. But as the ordinance is written right now, uh, the general fund's at nineteen point nine-two-eight mills, the debt service is at nine point three-one mills, and the library is at four point zero-four mills, which is flat. And then finally, um, we were notified by the county that they would not be contributing the funds that we had requested from them for, uh, the Internal Service Fund cost to, uh, the EMS program. Um, so if we, if we don't do anything, we have to reduce our revenue by two hundred and thirty-three thousand, uh, which would , uh, impact our, our fund balance. Uh, if you were to increase the mill to cover that, it would be point two-one-eight mills. The site improvements for the training burn tower are still undecided by the county, but they did approve the parking lot and the, um, elevator, the improvements, uh, or the maintenance to the community, uh, building. So this is what the general fund would look like. The, uh, working budget, as we lo, left it, had revenues of eighty-one point four-zero-eight million, expenditures of eighty-two point one-four-three million. Um, removing that revenue of two hundred and thirty-three thousand would drop revenue to eighty-one point one-seven-five. The, uh, revenue in excess of expenditures would grow to nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand, and fund balance would drop from a little over nineteen million to eighteen point eight million. So next, uh, up is to conduct the public hearing, and then consider the, uh, ordinance. I'd be happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Any questions?
Are we bond funding the fire medical payment replacement? Are we paying for that from our resources?
Yes. What we're going to do is temp note that project. Um, and then as the county pays their portion, then we'll just pay off the temp notes.
Are they going to pay the interest on that?
Um, I don't believe we've ever charged an interest in any of the other agreements that we've had with them, but we can look into it.
So we're going to carry them on this, then?
We're going to follow, as far as I, as far as I've been told, we're going to follow our traditional, uh, arr, arrangements with them, where we pay for it upfront, and then they pay us back over a number of years.
Okay.
Any other questions for Jeremy? Thank you. So have a motion.
I'm going to open the public hearing. Second.
A motion by Commissioner Soden, and a second by Commissioner Nanda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously. The public hearing is open.
Good evening. My name is Joe Harkins. I live at seventeen thirteen Troon Lane. Uh, I came down this evening, uh, because I got excited from the newspaper article, and thought somebody had some splaining to do. And I think you got a good explanation, and I'm, I'm very pleased to, to have, uh, heard that. And I think it's, it is, uh, an issue that is resolved. But it is, uh, this discussion has brought up two other subjects that I think deserve your, uh, careful attention. The first one, from a positive point of view, is a inclining rate structure, block rate structure. Uh, that is a very responsible, uh, thing to do. It is something that, uh, is just the opposite of how we got into trouble in this state in the past by having declining rate structures to encourage the use of water, as opposed to inclining rate structures, structures which encourage water efficiency. Uh, so you're headed in the right direction, and I'm, uh, very pleased about that. The second issue, though, is one that does trouble me. And that is, uh, the practice of using water revenues to supplement the general fund. Uh, that's a slippery slope. The state, uh, regulatory theory is that municipalities can regulate themselves, and therefore you are exempt from state regulation of your rates for your utilities. Uh, but the, uh, practice of using a utility to supplement your operating budget somewhere else, uh, can become very problematic. It is, right now, the equivalent, in my opinion, of what the state did, uh, a couple of years ago, which is pass a sales tax on food. Uh, you basically are charging a fee, uh, indirectly on the water, uh, to your poorest of the poor, who have to have it for their, uh, livelihood, uh, in order to subsidize the budget, and, uh, by cost shifting. Uh, I really would urge you to back away from that policy. You're not going to be able to do it in this budget, I'm sure. But I would encourage you to think about backing away from that, so that, uh, uh, you, uh, do not set up and, and institutionalize the practice of charging your poorest residents.
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate it.
I have, I have a question for you. Sir, would you support a reduced percentage over time for that?
I would support a reduced percentage over time, and I would support a, a, a certain, uh, amount of money, uh, that represents the actual overhead expense of the utility. Because of the way the city is structured, it is true, and it was mentioned tonight in testimony, that you, uh, have costs associated with personnel. I'm sure there's legal costs, there's some other costs that central administration bears for the operation of the utility. I don't have any problem-
Okay.
-with that being identified and reimbursed, uh, with, with some sort of an overhead rate.
Okay. What about use of the right-of-way? Is that something that you'd support?
I'm, I, I just don't know what that means, uh, well enough to, I mean, I don't, I mean-
Okay.
It seems that there's lots of different right-of-way situations, and I don't know how to generalize about that.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to speak. Commissioners, Keith Nolan, seven forty-five Missouri. Uh, I'm here representing the Lawrence Community Shelter Board of Directors. I serve as treasurer currently. I first wanted to say thank you to the commission for, uh, it's been a, it's been quite a budget process, I think, uh, to go through this year. It's been a transitional year for the, the shelter. I think we're making real progress. I, I really appreciate all of the commissioners' time, that have taken time to sit down and listen to us. I think that the, I know that the shelter does important work. We, we change people's lives, uh, we, we save lives by, by being here. I think we're a very important resource in the community. We rely a great deal on city and county money to, to operate. Uh, that's been the case in the past, and for the foreseeable future, that, that will most likely be the, the case. Um, it's, it, I understand. So I came tonight with a proposal to perhaps make a clearer path for budget discussions in the future for the shelter. It seemed that we were caught somewhat in the middle between the county and city as far as the funding and who was gonna provide what. And a lot of that discussion is over my head, over the board's head. But what I would like to propose is that the city commission appoints representatives to meet with the county commission representatives. I'm gonna go see them next week at their meeting. And Lawrence Community Shelter leadership so that we can discuss what it is you want the shelter to be for this community. And perhaps to form a framework, a bedrock that we can grow from as far as, we know you can't commit funds for future commissions, but at least if we can have an understanding of what the three of us can do together, and I would ask that maybe we begin that process sooner than later and come to some conclusions prior to the 2021 budget process proceeding. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Keith. Appreciate it.
Good evening. Ted Boyle, North Lawrence Improvement. There's one thing, two really, but one is the water rate and how you measure the use of it. And how would that affect, say, a family of seven? Both parents working low-paying jobs and renting a home. And, you know, they're paying the same as a person moderate upper means. And so how would you justify that to them since the city, this is the only utility that the city owns and mandates, you might say? So kind of worry about that. Low mod people with large families pay, gonna pay the same rate? Or is there some kind of a organization or discount? Or do they come over to the Ballard and get assistance to pay the city for drinking water? And so that's something to think about. That's what we think about, anyway. And there's a lot of families out there like that, that are six, seven, eight people in the family with grade school kids. And you're in the winter, in the wintertime, and the use of that is gonna be pretty high. And there not gonna be water in their lawn or washing the car. So need to think about that. And the other deal is, is on that mistake that was made and direct this to Commissioner Herbert about, seems like you were, had a problem with the newspaper. And, you know, it's all about transparency. And it just so happened that the general world let us know without a lot of candy coating on it. And so, you know, we talk about transparency and sometimes it's not as transparent as people think, being that I've been coming up here for twenty-three years and gone to a lot of commissioners and city managers and department heads. And, you know, I can make a big list of city screw-ups and hand to general world, you know. I don't. But the deal is, is needs, the city commission needs to be more transparent. And also staff, it looks like to me, is not letting you folks know is what's happening behind the scenes. I mean, you guys sitting up here trying to run the city, dictate the city. And again, staff is supposed to be feeding you the information from that because we only, you don't call, talk to the neighborhoods very much.
Other public comment?
Hi, my name is Mike Harold. I live at fourteen oh six Tennessee Street. And I actually, it's a bit odd, I actually have two things to speak on because a friend of mine who also lives at fourteen oh six wanted me to present some of their information. So, there'd be a bit of repeat. Hello, my name is Mike Harold. And not only am I a direct service advocate at the shelter, I'm also a bit of an independent researcher. Now, there's one thing that emerges from much of the literature on the topic of homelessness, one thing that many researchers seem to agree upon from what I've seen. And that is that homelessness emerges in part as policy failure, not only in economic and distribution terms, but also in national, state, and local levels of politics. The fact is that a part of the problem is a lack of strong policy positions from the city of Lawrence to combat the ongoing homelessness crisis. The shelter does not have enough resources to truly address this problem. I've personally had to tell people who are suffering and stuck in the heat in a place not fit for habitation or otherwise in poor circumstances that we just don't have spots for them. I've had to tell them to undergo the trauma of going without shelter even longer. And this is not one or two people in a week, this is six to seven people daily. And to be clear, homelessness has health risks and it's hard to escape even if people do find themselves at our shelter. The city could fix us, and until the city does, the shelter has to function. Underfunding us, even if you are increasing our budget, is nothing more than a reprehensible policy position that will have deep impacts for some of the most vulnerable within Lawrence. I would honestly welcome the idea of underfunding the shelter if it was paired with a strong policy of housing the homeless or those at risk, and those at risk of going homeless. I would welcome the idea of making the shelter redundant, even if it means I would become unemployed. But until the policymakers in the city are brave enough to act and to take on such policy positions, the fact is that the shelter is not only necessary, but is under-equipped for the current policy of not addressing this crisis. The landlords, developers, and business owners will not resolve this crisis for you or for those among us who suffer from homelessness. Ultimately, their very interests align against any solution to this crisis, which is why no community who relies upon them has ever seen this crisis reach resolution, even though the resources exist to do so. So I not only invite you to review your budget and increase our funding even further, but I also invite you to begin to adopt policies that may actually serve the interests of our community, to adopt policies that will house the homeless and not to rely on market solutions that never work. I invite you to do so because it not only would be a good moral and ethical policy, but...
Thank you, Mike. There's three minutes. Thank you, sir. Other public comment?
Hi, it's Harrison again. There's a couple of things that concern me during this fairly large presentation. One is the fact that there was approximately thirty million dollars that was misplaced for a couple of years. It wasn't like it disappeared, obviously, but it seemed to have disappeared off the books and got shifted around. And that's concerning as a resident who pays taxes to this city that my money was in there as well, just getting shifted around. We really didn't know where it was, how it was formed. And then, oh, it suddenly reappears after it gets audited? It's a concern of mine. Secondly, water is a basic, fundamental human right. It is literally the bottom of Maslow's hierarchy of needs. And you cannot think about increasing the cost of water on individuals who already struggle to pay their bills on time and make ends meet to support their families. It is a tax on the most poor, and it is a tax that is increasing every year. You saw on the chart that somewhere in the slide further back how there's a fairly large increase in the actual, I don't know where it is, but there's a big jump in how much money is being taken from individuals who are trying to survive. You can live without Wi-Fi. I know some people who go, that use candles instead of using lights in their house to make sure that they can pay all their bills on time. You cannot do that with water. You cannot say, oh, you know, today I'm only gonna drink one glass of water and that's gonna be my source of water for the day. It's unhealthy and it's unethical for a city to be like, you know what you should do? You should pay more in water to help supply our general fund. And that's what the city has been doing as a policy for the last couple of years, according to the presentation and the comments that have been made by the city commission tonight, is that you've been taking anywhere from six to eleven percent of water revenue and putting it in the general revenue fund. It's unacceptable that you're making people pay more for the most fundamental of human rights. It's like saying, no, you know what? You have to pay twenty dollars for a loaf of bread. It's unethical, it's abhorrent, and to consider raising it even further is a moral failing of the commission. And so I can completely urge you to not adopt on the first reading this increase in water and instead follow some of the news articles. There's a study that could be done that would not be completed for six weeks to determine a more efficient way of handling this situation. And it also concerns me that members of the commission were not aware of this increase. Three of you were quoted in the article saying, I have no idea what this basically is. And to say that the article that you're quoted in is basically lying, Commissioner Herbert, is also unethical. Thank you.
Other public comment?
Hello, my name's Howard Callahan. I'm a staff member at Lawrence Community Shelter. Just wanted to comment that, you know, I've seen a little bit and I can kind of understand some of the insecurity regarding public perception with the very complex and somewhat contentious budget that you guys are going over at the moment. I did wanna point something out, though. There is not a winter in memory in which Lawrence Community Shelter has not done what I feel is one of the most important things that we do, which is try to get every single homeless person that we can in that building over the wintertime. For the longest time that I've worked here, worked there, our motto has been, nobody freezes to death on our watch. But coming into this winter, because we went along with the recommendations of the audit recommended by the city, we're looking at going into a situation in which we will not be able to, in fact, to do so. And that is potentially going to have a major impact. It'll have a major impact on law enforcement, it will flood the library, it will put a burden for emergency calls. I mean, it will have a major impact, not to mention the impact on the, you know, from what I've come to understand is gonna be not an insignificant number of homeless people that will not have shelter over this winter. I'm not entirely sure who can solve that, I'm not entirely sure who's to blame, but I really hope that that is something that you take into consideration if there is any room to consider or reconsider or considering into the future what role the city's gonna have in helping the homeless shelter maintain its funding stream. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment?
Hi, I'm Chris Flowers. I'd just like to say a few things about taxing the water. Opponents of this say it will affect the poor's access to water by making it more expensive. But I would like to point some things out. First, I don't know if you've ever visited a trailer park, but they're not drinking water, they're drinking Mountain Dew. Second, if cost becomes a factor, the poor could just shower less. It's not like they're going to a fancy dress ball. Why does it matter what the poor smell like? Another thing the poor could do is take notes from the Mayor's National Challenge for Water Conservation Month and start pooping in a bucket in order not to spend money on flushing a toilet. As a bonus, they could use their feces as fertilizer to grow food in a garden so they can eat organic since they can't afford to shop at the Merc. Thank you.
Other public comment?
Chris is a hard act to follow. My name's Katie Walsh, speaking only for myself. I wanted to talk about the community shelter briefly. I would like to concur with the treasurer who came up and talked about it not as just another nonprofit seeking city-county-united way funds. It is an emergency service. And I remember when Commissioner Bob Shum was fighting for funding for the shelter years ago, and he turned to his other commissioners and he said, really? Do you wanna run a community shelter? Do you want it to be a city department? If not, step up and share some of the load with the county. Thank you.
Dan Dennenberg, two seven zero two, University Drive. There's a organization here in Lawrence, it's called Explore Lawrence or Deplor Lawrence, I'm never sure. It's only about a million dollars. And I tried to find out how they spend that money. And I did find on their interweb thing a pie chart of income and expenses, but that's about it. I think these organizations that get city money, public money, should do better in reporting their financials. The same thing comes from the Lawrence Community Shelter. I used to be a pretty ardent supporter. And on two occasions, I asked to see, in essence, asked to see the books. I said, where's your income? How are you expending this money? On both occasions, I, in essence, got blown off. And neither of those requests were in my usual rant. So transparency has to come into play here someplace. And here we are at almost nine thirty, and these proceedings started at five forty-five P.M. And here we're talking about a budget, about the last item on the agenda at nine thirty at night. No, that's not right. An item like the budget should be a separate meeting away from other considerations. How we spend this two hundred and sixty-seven million dollars is too important to have it sandwiched in with all these other things. They're important, of course, but we need to have a dedicated session on the budget. And I think it should be at a place other than this. I don't like this room. This room is terrible. You know, you can't see the thing up there or over there or over there. And so I think we need to use either the Lawrence Art Center auditorium with a nice big screen where you can actually read the projections or the Lawrence Library auditorium where you could have a nice big screen and lots of chairs spread out. And have it on, I don't know when you would schedule it, but it would have to be sometime separate from other business because two hundred and sixty-seven million dollars is too important to be put in with other things that the city is dealing with. And I will say the one last word, transparency.
Thank you, Dan.
May I?
Yes.
Would it be possible for staff to provide Dan with a copy of the audited financial statements for Explore Lawrence? Great, thanks.
Public comment? Other public comment?
Thank you, commissioners, and I'll remember to sign in this time. Marcy Francisco, eleven oh one, Ohio. I wanna thank all of you and I wanna thank the staff for the work they've done on the budget. This is never an easy process. But I came down tonight because I am concerned about increases in the water bills. We talk a lot about affordable housing. I think we all want to work to provide affordable housing. And I think the area that the city commission has the most control over with regard to that issue is the cost of the city's water, sewer, stormwater, and trash bills. My husband and I have been working to provide affordable housing through renovation, and we do have rental property. Before these increases take place, we're seeing fifteen percent of some of the rent recharge go towards those utility bills. So it's not an insignificant charge. I would like to comment that I do agree that the... This is never an easy process. But I came down tonight because I am concerned about increases in the water bills. We talk a lot about affordable housing. I think we all want to work to provide affordable housing. And I think the area that the city commission has the most control over with regard to that issue is the cost of the city's water, sewer, stormwater, and trash bills. My husband and I have been working to provide affordable housing through renovation, and we do have rental property. Before these increases take place, we're seeing 15 percent of some of the rent recharge go towards those utility bills, so it's not an insignificant charge. I would like to comment that I do agree that the Internal Service Fund costs should be part of the water bills, but I also question the payment in lieu of taxes. And particularly when that standard percent could be charged on a big capital improvement project. So I think the one comment in the paper that really made sense is, if we're dealing with a $75 million project, do we want to see a flat 6 percent charged on that? Right now, the cost of water is proportional to how much you use, and that reflects the treatment and pumping. However, we talk about costs being maintaining city water lines, and that has to do with how big your lot is. So I'm here to say, I have a double lot in Oryad, so I think I should get charged for those utility replacement costs twice as much as my tenants in the duplex catty corner from our lot, because they just have a 50-foot lot. So is there any way we can look at that in the future? I also want to remember that this is going to affect programs differently. So if you're paying the utilities for the arts center, they've got that included. If we're increasing the utility costs for the community shelter, that adds to their cost. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Bonnie Lowe and the President and CEO of the Lawrence Chamber of Commerce. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I'd like to echo Marcy's comments and thank you all and staff as well for the thoughtful process that you have engaged during this budget season. This is the third time that we've attended a budget hearing, and I'm sure like Steve Kelly, our Vice President of Economic Development, who also is here, that you're glad it's August and it's almost to the end. So thank you very much. We've contacted you and provided testimony, and it's on record, about our economic development and the $20,000 reduction that has been noted for our budget. And our budget's been constant for about 10 years, and we do feel we're very good stewards of the cities and public funds. Economic development has been one of your priorities, and I would just like to mention that and respectfully ask that the $20,000 be reinstated to bring us up to where we've been in the past years. Again, thank you very much for your time and thanks for the service to our community.
Thank you, Bonnie. Other public comment? Okay, bring it back up to the commission.
We need to close the public hearing.
Oh, yeah, we gotta close the public hearing.
Move, did you move?
I did.
Okay, second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Ananda, second by Commissioner Herbert, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Passes unanimously. Okay, thoughts?
Well, I do want to mention, we had set aside, and my budget notebook is on my table, so I don't have the exact number, $20,000 or $22,000 for a review, staff review of the city manager. And I would like us to maybe reconsider where we spend those funds. HR told us that they would be willing to work with us to create some kind of assessment evaluation for the city manager. I think that that's a responsible place to start when we're looking at the budget that we're looking at. So I just wanted to put that out there to see what the reaction is.
So possibly using that money?
Were one of the things that we've cut, or, you know, I mean, it's a small amount, but it can also be divided to address other issues. But I think that that would be a responsible thing for us to do with those funds.
Could we put on the board the slide that shows the overview of the things that we are proposing? There you go. Could you make that? Okay. Any other comments on that? Anything else?
Not on that particular issue.
Did you have any specific recommendations for where that would be placed? I mean, I know you'd said that it could be divided, but on an amount that small to divide it out across, you know, eight or nine cuts is relatively insignificant versus perhaps having a specific direction?
I think that obviously the community shelter, who has showed up tonight and shared a lot of information that we all know and is poignant, that there could be a piece to that. The chamber also, that would fit nicely into the amount that was cut from what they're doing. And part of improving our community for those experiencing homelessness is ensuring that jobs are available. So those would, I mean, those would probably be my top two.
I guess I'd like to respond to that. I appreciate your comments, but I see the real need to grow our capacity as a commission in evaluating the city manager. I think that that's something that we did not perform well as, as a commissioner with the previous city manager. I think we have responsibilities as an employer to make sure that we do the best that we possibly can do. There will be two or three new commissioners on the commission next year, and I see this as a serious weakness of this commission that this was an attempt to address. And I am reluctant to rely on employees of the person that we hire and supervise in framing how we evaluate and supervise the city manager. So I'm very concerned about cutting this item.
I can definitely appreciate those comments. I think that having, kind of looking at what might lie in the future for me next year and my experience in HR, my experience with evaluations, my experience with employee relations, I know my own competence in that area and what I feel like I could bring to the table, particularly in a leadership role. Getting an idea of how the city evaluates staff is wholly separate, I think, than having our HR staff lead us in that evaluation. I do think that there is a distinction that has to be made. So I guess that's what I bring to the table in that conversation.
And I appreciate that. I appreciate your experience there. Thank you.
Any other thoughts? Are there any items that we want to consider? Bring you back.
I'd be all right with going on with Jennifer's idea.
How would you see, if that money were removed, how would you foresee HR directing an evaluation of the city manager?
I don't see HR directing the evaluation of the city manager. I see the city commissioners directing that evaluation. I see HR providing us with resources and information on how they direct staff in evaluating management and evaluating their own staff. And then we would take that information and apply it separately and facilitate that process internally.
It's an interesting idea, and I don't hate it. I don't want to, my questions are not me searching for a way to oppose it by any means. You know, I routinely speak against how often we tend to farm out what I see as our in-house duties, and so on that principle alone, I'm interested in the idea of bringing in-house a little more responsibility and therefore saving a little of our capital. I think that the question becomes, for me really, where does that money get placed? And is it a trade-off that is of value? You know, because it is such a small amount of money that I want to see that its placement is of consequence, that we're not just making, you know, I think sometimes when it comes to budgeting, we make decisions based on emotion as opposed to sound guidance. And, you know, that's very easy to do when you have a roomful of people that are upset that their budgets have been cut or their expectations haven't been met. But I just want to make sure as we make these trade-offs that they're not being made out of emotion, but rather being made out of sound judgment. And I think Stuart presents a good point that, you know, this is a weakness. I do agree with him wholeheartedly that we have done a poor job. When I say historically, I'm speaking only to my four years up here, but I do think we have done a poor job in that small bit of historical reference at evaluating city management. I do, I agree. And so while I'm open to the concept, I think I would need to understand how that money would be used to better, to benefit some program at a greater degree than what Stuart foresees it being used as.
I guess I'd also share that while I appreciate your experience, I don't share it. And I feel the need, you know, and I may not be here doing it, but, you know, I think as a commission, having someone come in and work with us for one year to do this would get us off on a good start with our new city manager. So that's my case.
And if I weren't me, I would totally agree with you, so I understand where you're coming from.
Yeah. I think that just because we might decide to not have $20,000 for the city manager review, if we cut it for next time, doesn't mean we're always going to cut it. I mean, just Jennifer has the experience, she's willing to share it with us. I think that there's other items that we've had over the years that were a commissioner's specialty, you might say, and we leaned on those commissioners for that. So just try it for a year. If y'all aren't happy with it, then, you know, because we're not going to be here, then put the $20,000 back in for 2021. It's not, this isn't like some kind of make or break forever impacting year by year, just...
I don't see this as a recurring expense, I'll just tell you that.
Yeah, well, just try it, see if you like it.
Any other items that, want to discuss that some more? Any other items that anybody would be interested in discussing off of this list or anything else?
Well, one that we talk about every year, of course, is reducing the fund balance a smidgen to cover things. And, you know, I was looking at, we brought it down, I think, half percent if I remember right. Maybe we can have that slide up that talked about the fund balance, that the changes that we made and how it impacted. So it was like 23 points versus 22 points if I remember right.
We do also have to consider that, I mean, we had a, what, $233,000 change from the last time we had this conversation and not in a positive direction.
Right.
So in terms of utilizing fund balance, that, I mean, there's your slide right there, $233,000.
Talk about this every year. Let's talk about it again. You know, I mean, I'd be willing to bring it down, you know, if we have $20,000 for that, just down $120,000 more, the fund balance for the shelter. That's what I would do.
What are your thoughts on that?
Well, you know, I'm not speaking for Jeremy. He certainly can pop up there and speak for himself, but, you know, when Brian was here as Finance Director, his recommendation was always 25 percent. And we certainly aren't there, and we're moving the wrong direction. What's that?
Jeremy, is that, can you discuss, the policy on that?
The policy is a 25 percent. I believe there's some flexibility to allow for, you know, fluctuation. One thing I would add, just if you were to consider increases to the shelter, would it be a one-time increase because of our one-time dollars, or are you talking about increasing the annual appropriation to the shelter with fund balance? Because that would, that could create some systemic problems long-term.
Yeah.
That's a good question.
That's always been, I mean, that's always been the response every time we've done this, is that it's not a sustainable approach. Frankly, what we are doing with this budget in order to keep the mill levy flat is not a sustainable approach, as it sits now, without any conversation about increasing cuts, or increasing dollars to make up for cuts, excuse me.
Yeah, and that's been part of the conversation during this whole budget session the last, that it's not sustainable.
And, you know, this budget also essentially puts a task on to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board and staff to try to craft a plan that we can adapt or adopt next year so we can go forward with the Parks and Rec programs. So we've got a lot of work to do as we adopt, you know, whatever budget we get.
So is there any other interest? I mean, Commissioner Sodan's indicated possibly bring down that fund balance a bit. I don't know what that would take. Is there any other interest in that?
I mean, we have to create a budget responsibly, and one-time fixes like that make us look good and make people in the room happy on behalf of us, but it, all it does is it creates a larger problem for next year's budget and the year after that, and the commissioners after that. So I think whatever choices we make here need to be made responsibly.
Do you think that going forward in our communication, I would really like to work to change the tone of the conversations that we've been having with the county in regarding to fund, in regard to funds broadly, in that, you know, we are in this together. We are in Douglas County, and they are part of us, and we can collaboratively work toward equitable solutions from a place of finding solutions rather than pointing out problems. And I really do hope to change the tone of those conversations as we move forward so that hopefully we can find some long-term solutions for issues like this that I think unfairly so in some circumstances, and particularly this one, they have become the child between divorced parents who are arguing. And I don't, I don't want that to be the tone moving forward because they're all part of our community, and we are responsible, in my opinion, for ensuring the safety of our community, and that's part of that. And we can really approach this from that perspective, and I know it's a little pie in the sky, and it's a little maybe naive, but I also don't think so, because I think that we all come to this work because we want to be here and we want to make a positive difference in our communities. So that really is my hope for moving forward in these conversations, and that intent, I think, has to be present in future budgets as we approach these conversations. So I agree with Matthew that we have to be responsible with our fund balance because that is our responsibility to our taxpayers, maintaining that balance close to our policy as we can while also working towards solutions in the future.
Well, I don't think the pie in the sky is out of reach. I know that, you know, I've been having almost monthly meetings with the Chair of the County Commission as well as another commissioner on a separate occasion, and that's been part of the discussion, is to have a forward, forward these items in a manner that's going to be best for all of Douglas County residents. And I'm hopeful, I've also been talking to our new city manager about that, how to work that conversation and make it, so we all, you know, win on that. So where do we want to go on this? We've got interest for $22,000. It's not obviously going to cover much. Do we want to change anything else? Do we want to?
Jeremy's going to save the day. Give him a second.
Sadly, no. I just want to clarify, I had stated the policy was 25 percent. It's actually, the policy's actually 15 percent with a maximum of 30 percent, but the target that we try to achieve is that 25 percent. So you would not be going under policy to go as low as 15 percent. But the target, the generally, the general target the city has tried to adopt over the last several years is 25.
We're not at our target with this budget.
You're not at the minimum.
But we're not at the target either.
That's right. Yeah, this budget puts us under the target.
And we published the mill so we could raise the property taxes to pay for some of these things within that half-mill increase, right?
That is within your prerogatives.
Yeah.
So I lost count. Were there three votes to get that $22,000 reallocated? Were there three votes to get that $22,000 reallocated?
Jennifer, we're positive for that.
How are you feeling about it, Mayor?
Well, um.
Because you're, you're going to be here for that evaluation and I'm not, so I'm, I'm.
You know, I am intrigued by the idea of using, with Jennifer's expertise, because I agree with Commissioner Sodan that we have done that with other commissioners, leaned on them for, I mean, look at our, our budget prospect, budget process. We've leaned heavily, I do anyway, on Commissioner Bowley. And I know there's, you know, others that have also.
You did for mediation at one point.
Yeah, for mediation. I'm intrigued by that idea, I really am. So I would be interested in, in possibly using those funds for something else.
Okay, so let's talk about what that something else is then.
I do want to clarify quickly the word experience versus expertise. Just, I, I don't want to, I don't want to state qualifications. I am not qualified to like, you know, train a class on, on doing that, but it's something that I do have experience in.
Thank you for that clarification.
You're a professional.
Jeremy?
Sorry, I was just going to go back to that slide if you wanted to.
One other prospect is, and I know this doesn't help this budget for 2020, but there's also the thought that, one of the concerns is with our sales tax dollars that have been coming back this last year, not as healthy as have we, have we have seen in the past, is the prospect that as the new year starts and we start getting into seeing what our sales tax dollars do, if they come in higher than anticipated, the possibility of going back to these items like the shelter, the chamber and the BTPC, and leaving it open to reevaluate if the sales tax dollars are strong to provide some additional funding at that point. And I know we can't commit future commissions, but I would be interested in doing that if, if we don't have a consensus on whether to raise the mill levy or change anything, to at least look at that, to see where our sales tax dollars are towards the beginning of the year and whether or not that would be a possibility.
Well, we generally do budget amendments anyway, so.
Yeah, we do, we do budget amendments. And I know, speaking with Craig, he's got some ideas on that. And that would be the time to do it, because we do budget amendments quite a bit throughout the, the year. So that would be a possibility. Is there any interest in that? I don't, again, it doesn't impact this budget, but.
Yeah, it's, it's all hypothetical too at that point.
But that's where I, my interest would be, is to see how those dollars start coming in. So we didn't have interest in though lowering the, the fund balances? Is that, we, I know Commissioner Sodan won that. Is there anybody else that was interested in that? I don't think you two were. Okay, so we're, that's dead, okay. So what else? I just.
It's gone, it's gone Leslie, it's done.
I just wanted to check, recheck. Anything else we want to change? Or do we just need to move forward with this? Or what do you want to do?
I think it's time to move forward.
So you said anything else you want to change? What have we changed?
Well, we're, we're looking at possibly 22K for something. And so the question was, by Commissioner Herbert, is what is that something? So what are your thoughts on that?
I already said the shelter, so.
Anybody else?
I've already shared either the shelter and the chamber or both.
Or both, okay.
I mean, I think that's what we've got it narrowed down to on that list, is that that's what our, that's where our priorities are is, you know, as Bonnie pointed out, economic development is one of our priorities. And obviously taking care of our community as a whole, public safety and, and care for our neighbors is, is always our priorities. And that certainly the shelter fits within that, that category as well.
So do we want to put that money towards one or the other? Or, I mean, it's not much, but it's.
It's, what is the specific, is it 22,000? Is that what the specific amount was?
I believe so.
It's 25,000.
Twenty-five, wow.
Let me verify it.
Okay.
So maybe like five for the chamber, 17 for the shelter. Is that what you're, what kind of split you're?
Well, if it's 25, then it's 25.
I think 22 is what I remembered.
She's looking, she thought it was 25.
I mean, one, one of the issues to discuss is, is historically what we've, what we've paid out. You know, when we, we look at the Chamber of Commerce, this is a group that has been stagnant at 200,000 for as long, as long as I've been here. So this is not a group that has seen any sort of fluctuation, upward movement, inflationary rise. And quite to the opposite with this budget, they, they see a 10% reduction in, in funding.
Nor have they asked for additional funding.
Correct, but yeah, that's, that's true.
That I know of, that I can recall.
But, you know, as we prioritize economic development within the community, I think holding the chambers funding flat.
We were at 220. In the recommended budget for the chamber.
20,000 is a bastard.
Bonnie, yeah.
Mayor, I could repeat what Bonnie was saying.
Sure, that'd be fine, yeah.
20,000 dollars of that amount goes to the small business.
Okay, great, thank you for that clarification.
That's a separate.
We pay it to the chamber and they pass it on, but it doesn't go to the chamber.
So that would still be passed on, so there actually.
Thank you for that clarification.
It's $20,000 that we have in there for the city manager performance valuation.
That was not the answer we wanted, but.
Look again.
No, that's what it is.
Anything else we want to change? And what do you want to use that money for?
20 gets the chamber back to where they've been for a decade. You know, and, and if, if we prioritize economic development in the community, I think at the minimum, holding a stagnant budget, that's not really prioritizing it, but it's at least not de-prioritizing it.
No, no, you're okay with that.
I am, particularly if we talk about, you know, looking at any increased revenue that we experience, really looking at where that goes in, in regard to the other things that we've discussed.
Leslie, would you be?
I've already, I feel like I've already said it two or three times where I'm at.
For the, for the chamber?
I would do like five for the chamber and 15 for the shelter, something like that.
Stuart, any comment?
I still want to spend it on something else.
Well, I would be fine with moving the money to the shelter, I mean, I'm sorry, to the chamber. And I would also be fine if we split it, so.
I guess I'd, I'd go with Matthew on that one.
Okay, just to the chamber?
Just the chamber, yeah.
Chamber, okay. I think there's enough consensus on that. Anything else? Are we going to call this a?
So what's the final determination?
Is the $20,000 would go to the chamber.
Only?
That's the consensus, that's the majority right here.
Okay, I would, Jeremy, are you about to say something?
Well, I was just going to say, I don't believe that changes our ordinance, so you're still.
Am I able to just adopt on first reading without amending it? Okay, I would move we adopt on first reading ordinance number 97007, making note of changes as discussed in the minutes.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Herbert, a second by Commissioner Bowley. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes unanimously. Okay, we're on to item G, which are future agenda items to add. Do we have anything from the commission? Nothing? Okay, item number two, future work session items to add? Nothing? Any other items? Any other items?
I just wanted to bring up a, kind of publicly a discussion point. I had, I had this conversation with the city manager previously, but I wanted to, in, in this venue, have the opportunity to have the conversation. I think one item that I would like the commission to consider as they move forward in terms of policy, I've been approached separately in kind of an odd coincidence by two Lawrence residents, kind of entrepreneurial spirit, are, are looking at starting businesses and have gotten all the way to a conversation with the city where they were shut down. And what their, their business is, is they are both independent of one another, trying to start businesses to do trash cart cleaning services. McNeilis, which makes our trucks auto loader arms, you know, scoops it up and dumps it, also makes trucks that are a, kind of a self-cleaning modular. It's an $80,000 vehicle, but using the same arm mechanism that our trash trucks use, picks up the can, uses a high-pressure washer to clean the can, sets it back down, that sort of thing. If you do about five seconds of Google research, you'll see it's kind of taking off across the country. It's a service people are willing to pay for. And independent of each other, these two individuals approached me saying that they are interested in, in purchasing this. I think one of them has actually already spent the $80,000 to purchase it in order to start a business here in Lawrence and has gone to our solid waste department where they have been told, absolutely not. This is unacceptable, do not touch our trash cans. So it's a conversation I want to open up to all of you. It's, it's something, you know, you oftentimes hear some cynicism from the community about how difficult it is, you know, your community's so anti-business, da-da-da-da. And a lot of times that's from a place of emotion. But I think this is an actual instance where we have the power to, to open the door for a couple of businesses and, and to do so, I think relatively harmlessly. And so it's, it's a policy I'd like to, to have this commission visit at some point, whether I'm here or not, looking at how we treat our trash carts in terms of ownership and, and enabling people to, to work there. One of the neat features of this, of this system is that it's, it's self-contained enough that it can actually recapture that water. And so, you know, Mayor, you probably know more about that than I do from an environmental standpoint, but a lot of gas stations are making use of it for, there's a lot of regulations on how those areas can be cleaned and this vehicle enables that process because of its ability to recapture that water. So they're, they're really, they're, they're neat systems and a lot of people are trying to kind of create an entrepreneurial spirit around it. And, and it's a spirit that I would support, so.
So are you proposing that we discuss a policy around kind of being a yes before a no?
I don't know that it even needs to be an ordinance. I think it can be dealt with administratively. I just think we need to have a little bit of lenience with our policy on, on what we enable someone to do with the trash can that sits at the end of their driveway all the time.
So are you interested in having staff look at that, I'm assuming?
Yeah, yeah, I'd ask.
Other interest in that?
I'd like to learn more about it.
And I think when we're talking about the commission's role in that, in as much as we direct the city manager, but also creating a strategic plan that can be adopted by employees that is relevant to the work that they are doing and reflecting that so that, you know, if there is economic development as a priority, then we're, we're instituting that throughout the organization.
I think there's enough interest to look at that a little further.
Yeah, I was on my way to researching it. I haven't talked with any staff since you mentioned it, but we'll be happy to take a look at that.
Okay, thanks. I have one other item and I, this is about a comment that Ted Boyle brought up during general public comment, I think it was about the, the pump under the, under the bridge, the railroad bridge. And I would just like to have, ask staff to look into that more, because I know I've talked to Ted on a couple of occasions about it throughout the past year at least. And, and it would be nice to hear, you know, what staff has about that, okay? If that's okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I need.
I got one.
You got one?
I got one. In the newspaper article, there was a quote from a person who works for something called Curb, the Citizens Utility Rate Board or something like that. And I can't remember the exact comment, but it was something to the effect that people who don't own homes will pay utilities, but they don't pay property taxes. And I'd like to have the mayor send a letter to the Utility Rate Board to, to ask for more information about that because I think we've kind of been under the impression that people who pay rent actually do pay property taxes through their rent payments. So I'd like to have a little clarification on that. And so I think sending a letter to Curb and just saying, you know, take a look at what the quote is and, you know.
I got the quote here, because I meant, I meant to bring that up earlier. The people we want, this is the quote, "The people we want to most protect are low-income people. A lot of times, low-income people don't own their property and won't be subject to a property tax, but they will pay this fee." And that was from Mr. Don Nichol, who's a ratepayer advocate, and.
And has clearly never rented a property before, because absolutely, as property tax increases, so do demand prices.
I read the quote, I read the quote, I thought, we ought to send a letter and just ask them what their, what their, you know.
Because I think the article did say that Curb was not willing to weigh in on the matter. So, but I would still like to ask them to weigh in on the matter, since one of their advocates brought it up.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know if we need to get that on the agenda.
Can we just give staff direction or?
Well, you're authorizing the mayor to send that letter. Typically, we, we put that on an agenda for everything.
Yeah. So maybe I should have brought it up under an agenda item, I just didn't think of it that way.
Okay, we'll do that. Thank you, anything else?
There is the Kansas League of Municipalities Conference in October, I believe. And I didn't know if, well, I guess it would be you and me if you were thinking about going. I mean, I guess others could as well, but.
I'd like to see what they got on there.
It seemed relatively interesting.
Okay. I'll look at the, I'll look at it, okay. Any other items? All right, let's move on to the city manager report.
There's a variety of communications that you received here. And I don't know traditionally whether you want to go through every one. I'd be happy to do so with the, the late hour, maybe if there's any questions.
I thought that the point in time count numbers were interesting and I did some analysis on those because they did break them out demographically by type of sheltering statistics. But the numbers, when you take them in whole, are different and they weren't included. And I think that I want to know more about, you know, maybe, and, and maybe this is research that, you know, the shelter that we have that is experiencing funding crisis, we could work to understand that better. But looking at emergency shelter versus unshelter versus transitional housing, if you look at the demographics in each of those, they're very different. And when you look at them whole, they're also very different. So that was, I don't know, I just, I want to know more about, about why that is. For example, the black population total was 23% of that homelessness count. The black population in the unsheltered is 5%. And in the emergency shelter is 21% and the transitional is 35%. It's kind of all over the place. So I found that really fascinating and it, and I know that there are multiple organizations that participate in sheltering at varying levels and the emergency shelter is one, one piece of that. But, you know, how does that correlate with participation in the criminal legal system or the civil legal system, for example, through child need of care? If they have children, are they more likely to be in a, in a certain setting? Anyway, it just prompted me to want to know more. And I'm sure that some of that information exists, but it was a fascinating tiny one-page read for me.
I wonder if the county has more on it.
I would imagine so.
Any other items on the city manager's report that we want to hear more detail on? I need to have public comment on the city manager's report. Any public comment? So we're on to calendar items then. We've got the. So, we're on to calendar items then. We've got the, um, twentieth anniversary of the Community Health Building on Thursday. I believe it's at four, four to six. And then on Saturday, we've got the Second Annual Community Safety Fair at South Park. So, that's always a really fun event. I went to it last year.
Yeah.
So, any other items?
I think it's, it's important to point out, on the nineteenth, there will be the Law Enforcement Contact Study Public Presentation occurring. Um, and that is at...
That's on my calendar.
Eleven, yeah. I just, I just wanna mention it. Um, eleven-thirty to twelve-thirty at the library.
So, I think that should be a good one. Any other calendar items?
Move, which chair?
Second.
Uh, motion by Commissioner Herbert, a second by Commissioner Nanda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes unanimously.